Everyone else has left the call.
That's okay. Testing, testing. Can you guys hear me? Okay. We are getting our fifth board member on line right now, so we'll give him a couple more seconds. We don't want to start without him. Did we vote on anything? We did, didn't we? Anybody have any good jokes? Any police officer jokes? Any dad jokes? Dad jokes? Oh, I know you have them. I forget who's standing right there. Sorry, you guys. Technology is great in most cases. We had to get off of closed session and onto open session, so I think they're trying to reboot or redo. Oh, that's good news, right? Isn't that a good noise? I think James should be up here.
James, can you hear us?
Hello, yeah.
Okay, good. We're good? Okay, we have James. All right, we're all here now. Great. Good evening, everybody. I'm calling to order the open session for the board meeting June, yeah, June 17th, 2025 at 6:25. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Mr. Scott North, an Acacia parent, here, and he's going to lead us in our pledge. See, this is what happens.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I think Sergeant Bridges was going to sing the anthem. Oh, no, sorry. Okay, reporting from closed session, the board took action by a vote of 5-0 to approve a settlement agreement and release agreement and between the Florton School District and the parents of student ID 3002411. Moving on to our reports for this evening, we'll start with our superintendent's report. Dr. Bob?
First of all, I apologize for the mask. I'm sick. But I did want to highlight a couple things. One in particular. Making very good progress on the ARCs, also known as performing arts slash gymnasiums. The Nicholas's actually has walls. Now, the walls are made out of, is it aluminum? What is the metal? Steel? What do we got here? Metal studs. There we go. So making some really good progress, and right now, we're still on track to meet the timeline. And we're hopeful that by October, Nicholas's will be pretty close to done. Maybe even September, so optimistic. And Parks, within the possibility, is still on track for Thanksgiving, or pretty darn close. So making some really good progress, and I want to thank Scott and the work he's done to shepherd that along.
All right. Okay, James, let's start with you this evening. Do you have a report?
I'm still on military duty. I'll be back for the next meeting, but some friends had sent me some pictures of some of the construction that's happening across our school district, so it's exciting to see. I'm looking forward to visiting in person. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ruthie?
Make sure. New microphones, so I'm learning how to use them. I missed last meeting, but in the last month, obviously, there's been a lot going on, and I got to attend a lot of the end-of-year events, including a dance performance at Nicholas, honors awards at La Dara Vista Junior High, Shrek performance at Laguna Road. But it was really a joy to celebrate some promotions. I got to participate in Raymond's sixth-grade promotion where my daughter promoted, and La Dara Vista's eighth-grade promotion where my other daughter promoted. And it really is one of the best things about being a trustee, is to be able to shake the hand of your own child and all the kids that I've known since kindergarten, and really celebrate with those families. It was really a very special moment for me. But yes, I did miss last week's meeting. I was in Asia on a vacation with family, and the timing was just really hard to do across the world. So I did listen over YouTube, and it was a very surreal thing to be around the world in a different part of the world last week, especially while so much was happening in our home community of Southern California. And I kept up as best I could with headlines of the news and play-by-play texts from friends as they were telling me about what was unfolding here in our communities, especially with the immigration enforcement and the illegal deployment of National Guard and Marines to Los Angeles, and how that was affecting our community. So it was a relief to fly home, to be at LAX, to see our beautiful city not under attack, but really calm. And throughout the week and this week, I've been checking in with friends, both on the front lines as well as friends that are affected by immigration and undocumented friends and families, to see how they're doing, and we know that they're not doing well. My colleague, trustee Australia, last week so poignantly shared just how our families are afraid, and our kids are afraid, afraid that their parents won't come home from work. Families are staying home from work, from church, from doctor's appointments because of the fear that they're experiencing. And they have already, our kids have been affected by deportations. And so this isn't a far-off issue. It's something that is affecting our kids, our families, our neighbors, our community. It's almost no socials, you know, it's us. And I am saddened that our kids are at the center of this political battle. So I'm grateful for the fact that the board and our superintendent and leaders have been proactive from day one to do what we can to protect our kids and families and their right to an education. And it's, you know, just coming back to this place, it's been hard to think about, what can I say in this moment that is going to make any difference? Other than we are with you. And as trustee Australia, especially and others on our board said last month, we encourage all of our community to continue to reach out for help and to offer help. And whether that's mental health or legal immigration support, groceries, rent, we will find a way to support our families, and we have been, and we will continue to do that. So please, whether that's through the Nicholas Community Center or even our local schools sites, you know, call. It's summer school. Principals are still there. Find a way to connect and find a way to help our neighbors.
Arunee?
No report this week. Thank you.
Nessa?
Hello, everyone. Since the last meeting, we haven't really had any events happening other than I have been reached out to by some of our SSAs that are right now at home on vacation, who are a little frustrated about what's happening. Like Ruthie just said, there's only so much that we can do when we're at home, and we're getting calls and we're getting texts from family who is afraid, who is, you know, not going to work, not wanting to go to the market. And it's very sad. It is very frustrating. But I just want to reiterate what I said last week, which was, please reach out to us. Please send us any message. We do have resources. As I said, Jenny's still here today, and she will be here all summer. Sorry, Jenny, I gave out your number last week, but if you need any resources. On today's agenda, we are amending Camino immigration's contract because we are going to keep them until August. We want to make sure that our families have the resources that they need. We are going to be meeting at some point because I have been talking to families who are in need of groceries. And as I said, please reach out to us. We have the resources in the district, and we want to help you. Please send, whether you send an email or you contact the community center, we will figure out a way to get groceries to you if that's what you need, or any other resource, mental health, housing, anything that you need. Please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you. Again, I think we are all very empathetic and understand that our families are going through a lot. So thank you both for bringing that up and for working on our family's insecurity, you know, food insecurities, because that's very important, keeping our children fed during the summer. And we will be able to figure out a way, if we could get through COVID and that, we could get through this. So thanks you again for everyone stepping up and making sure that we're doing what's right for them. Just had one thing to share with my fellow board members is Senator Umberg, I believe yearly does a roundtable, a school district roundtable. I don't know if it's a yearly thing or what. And he invites hit school superintendents from this area, along with, I think, just the school, the board president at the time. And so we've been invited to attend, and it's tomorrow. So there's a roundtable with Senator Umberg tomorrow. I believe Dr. Hammett and I are going to go. We came up and he's going to give a legislative update, and then we have an ability to highlight what we're doing as a district and then bring up any of our top priorities. So we have a few already, and I just thought I would throw it out there to my fellow trustees if you guys have anything outside of Prop 98 and the maneuver of that, of less the categoricals, funding for special education, ADA funding model based on enrollment and not attendance. Mental health, our funding for mental health is going down, and that mental health seems to continue to increase. A shortage of education special credential hours, a pathway to ensure teachers getting the credentials, have that ability to do that. So there are a couple more topics, I'm sure, but I don't know if we'll be able to bring up all those, and I'm sure that we will not be alone in many of those because we're all going into it as educators. So if you guys can think of anything that's hot on your minds that we can talk with them about that specifically relate to what they might be able to do. I'm sure immigration is on the minds of people as well. So just trying to find the things that we might want to bring up that might not be something that somebody else is talking about, so.
I would just add closely related to that, I think, is on less.
I would just add closely related to that, I think, is on last month, or last week, excuse me, I knew Rob brought up the fact that if, if federal education dollars are cut for ELD, English Language Development, especially around Title III, that would be a big gap for our district and the funds that we rely on for that really important work. So, looking at, I mean, I know it's kind of a, we don't know what's going to happen, but what would the state's response be, and how could we make up that difference if that were to happen? Because we do have so many English language learners in our, in our community, and it is so critical that we support that work.
Okay. Absolutely. So, if you think of anything, you wake up in the middle of the night, and you have that burning question, don't text me then. Send me an email, not a text. So, okay, so I'm gonna, I'll represent us tomorrow, and then I'll report back to let you guys know what happened. Okay, that's all I really have this evening. So, we will then move on to our associations. Do we have Delac here this evening? This evening? No, no Delac? PTA?
We do not have a report from PTA.
Okay. CSEA?
No report.
FETA?
No report.
FESMA?
No report.
Gosh, okay.
On vacation.
Okay, we're moving along then. I am going to read our, we do have a public comment, so I will go ahead and read our, our guidelines. The board meeting follows rules of decorum per board law, Board by Law 9323. Individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. The total time allotted, allowed for public comment shall be 30 minutes. Public comments about an item that are on the agenda will be heard at the time the agenda item is considered by the board. Public comments about an item that is not on the posted agenda will be heard at the beginning of open session when called upon by the board president. No action or discussion may be, may take place on an item that is not on the posted agenda, except expressively authorized by law. Since the board cannot take action on items that are not on the agenda, such, such items will be referred to the superintendent for handling. Board members may request that any item be placed on a future agenda for future discussion. The board president and the superintendent will determine the best time to place an item on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the board are invited to complete and submit a request to speak, slip, and provide it over to Anna, our executive assistant, and they're available up there. So, I do have one public comment, and it is on a item that is on our, as a presentation. So, but the presentation is not a, we're not voting on this item. So, I would assume that we can do our public comment now? Or should I wait until the beginning?
I would, I would wait till it's connected to the agenda item.
Okay. Then I will wait until C.
If it's, if it's on that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, we're gonna wait for items, when item C comes up, we'll do our public comment. Right? It'll be fast, I promise. It's not gonna be very long. Okay. Moving along then, approving minutes for the June 10th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the June 10th meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and that we approve the minutes from the June 10th meeting. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Opposed? Okay. Section seven, agenda approval. We have a revision to item Z, as in zebra, on consent. So, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the revision for item C, Z in our consent calendar?
Which is item Z?
Item Z is the agreement with the Fullerton School District and Nava Consulting.
Okay.
So, you should have this.
Yeah.
I have two.
Yes.
So, this is going to be revised. So, we're just right now approving the agenda, not the consent items, but the agenda with the revision. So, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we approve the agenda with the one revision. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Then we will now move on to our presentations. We're gonna start with our local indicators presentation. Some?
Pretended Dr. Pleka and Executive Cabinet. As part of California's Accountability System, districts are annually required to report data of our local indicators on the same data the LCAP is being approved by the board. So, tonight's presentation is on our local indicators of the California Dashboard. When the state indicators are released by CD in the wintertime, we'll be back to present those results to the board. Looks like it's kind of jumping up here. Go back to here. Okay. There we go. So, the eight state priorities can be categorized into three domains: conditions of learning, pupil outcomes, and engagement. Within these eight priorities are the local indicators that you see there boxed in red and blue. Both the local indicators and the state indicators, like I had mentioned, will be reported through the California Dashboard, scheduled to be released in November. And so, we'll go ahead and start with the conditions of learning, which are basic services, state standards, as well as course access. For the first priority involving basic services, you can see that Fullerton School District is 100% compliant in teacher assignments and credentialing, student access to instructional materials, as well as facilities meeting the Good Repair Standard. Each of these priorities are measured annually through the Williams Audit. The second priority, state standards, involves district progress on the implementation of those standards, with level one being at the exploration and research phase, and level five at the full implementation and sustainability phase. And so, for each of these categories shown in the slide, Fullerton School District scored at level four, which is full implementation. These results were the same as the previous year as well. And the third priority within the conditions of learning domain is the district's progress in offering all students access to a broad course of study. And as you know, Fullerton, I think we do a pretty good job of this, really going above and beyond, to give students a wide variety of learning opportunities. This slide represents just a handful of some of the learning opportunities that our students are able to experience. You know, there's a lot more that we can definitely add to this slide. And now, I'm gonna hand it over to Phil Ling, who will share about our local indicators related to engagement.
Good evening. The next local indicator is centered around engagement, which focuses on authentic learning experiences and the social-emotional well-being for students. The two local indicators in this area are parent engagement and school climate, and three groups of educational partners were surveyed. That included students, parents, as well as families and teachers. Both qualitative and quantitative feedback were collected, and in the succeeding slides, you'll see this year's survey data averages, along with last year's averages below them in parentheses. You can compare last and this. In addition, the LCAP team provided the advisory committee with a survey comments, which helped guide their recommendations as well for actions and services for each goal. The LCAP team also provided every school with their school-specific data, so they helped drive their parent engagement strategies and their school plan, or single plans for student achievement as well. So, for the first area, students were surveyed on three categories within school climate: academic rigor, connectedness, and safety. Each question was presented with a four-point scale, with a four being the most frequent and highest value, and a one being the lowest. 3,271 students between fourth and eighth grade responded to the survey this year. Of that, 2,045 completed it in elementary, while 12, I'm sorry, 1,226 junior high students completed the survey. And that is up from last year, which is about by 113 students, or about three and a half percent. The first area, academic rigor, as you can see on the screen, contained questions around expectations, participation, real-life applications, and staff support. So, for example, one question is, "I have opportunities to participate in activities and discussions during class," and in this area, overall response was 3.0 out of a four-point scale. The second area, connectedness, consisted of questions centered around inclusion, respect, and healthy discourse, where the average response was 2.9 out of four. And these questions included, "I feel like I belong at this school," or "Students are kind to each other at school" were included. The third area, safety, where the average response was 3.0. A sample question from this portion was, "I know what to do if there's an emergency or dangerous situation happening during the school day." And in this area, you can see that's 3.0 compared to 2.9, so very similar scores between this and last year. The second category focused on, I'm sorry, this year, we had 211 parents complete the LCAP survey, as compared to 306 from last year. For the first category, relationships, partnerships, and decision-making, there were questions such as, "The school does a good job partnering with families to ensure the success of students." In this area, parents averaged 3.2, which is the same as last year. The second category, centered around rigor, contained questions such as, "The school has high expectations for my child," or, "When my child doesn't understand something, I know where they can get help from their teachers." And the average here was 3.3, so very similar scores, as you're seeing across the board. Third category, around connectedness, averaged 3.3, with questions such as, "I have opportunities to help plan family engagement activities at my school." And lastly, the fourth category in safety had an average of 3.2, with questions such as, "I feel like my child is safe at this school." For our staff survey, this year, we added new layer of responses by including our classified staff, so those who work directly with students, as well as those who do not. And so, they had a chance to speak into many parts of the LCAP survey as well. A total of 335 staff members responded, which is an increase of about 199 from last year. Staff were also surveyed around local indicators with four primary categories. Social-emotional learning has a set of questions, such as knowing how to identify or respond to needs of students, and the average response here was 3.1 regarding their confidence in that area. The second category focused on teachers' confidence in instructional strategies, such as connecting students' cultural backgrounds to instruction, supporting multilingual learners, or incorporating ed tech. And the average here was 3.2, like last year. Safety, which centered around teachers' confidence and knowledge of how to respond during emergencies, was 3.3 compared to 3.2 last year. And the final category with school climate, averaged 3.3. And questions here were about teachers' confidence in how students in varying backgrounds get along, or how kind students are to each other at school. And the last local indicator is parent and family engagement, which measures how Fullerton School District builds relationships with school staff, families, and students, along with how we develop partnership and seek input for decision-making. From this slide, you can see that there are multiple platforms and methods in which FSC strives to engage with families, including our Delac, District English Learner Advisory Committee, our Annual Champions for Learning Conference, and block party for families, various parent workshops, surveys, and our Student Advisory Committee to incorporate the voice of students in the decision-making process as well. Community partnerships with organizations such as the Fullerton Education Foundation, the All the Arts Foundation, and OC United are just a few examples of ways FSC builds relationships locally. Additionally, we just started the FST SEPA, the Special Education Parent Alliance, a collaborative group equipped to help train and empower parents to support students within the special education community. And you'll see that on our slides next year, but we're excited to announce that that has also just begun. So, upon collection of this information, all local indicator data is provided to the state within the late fall, and results are posted on the California School Dashboard website in the winter. All parents and community members can see indicator data at www.ca-school-dashboard.org. And at this point, we can invite any questions from the board.
I have some questions. I realize that this, we're using survey data that California State provides for us, right, in the surveys that we give to students' parents, and, I mean, this, questions are pre-established. Is that correct?
No, we actually get to dictate the types of questions that we.
Oh, we do?
It, I mean, we have to make sure that those categories that we're looking for, that we.
Okay.
Are there, but we have some flexibility in terms of.
Some flexibility. I guess I'm wondering, the way it's reported with averages, sometimes, I mean, when I think about a four-point scale, all of the time, I might think, well, the one time five years ago it didn't happen, and, and not click four, but three, you know, it's, if I'm feeling really good, I might still click three. And I just, there's many ways to present data, right? Average is one way. And I wondered if we were to see like a cluster, and we saw 90% of the parents are saying threes, 3.5, but there was a couple down at the one, because they were mad, would that skew the average? You know, so I guess I'm wondering, are there other ways to look at this data that reveal more information?
Um.
I mean, the obvious answer is yes, but like, is it useful for you?
Well, I think it would be. There are, if I can take one back, so with the LCAP survey, we do have flexibility with those questions. With some of the local indicator surveys, it is something that the California, that SePA provides for us. So, for that one, that was the one through four, that is something that is in place. Does not necessarily mean that we can add some additional questions within our LCAP survey, since we do have some flexibility with that.
Mm-hmm. I just wonder how we move from that three, you know, I feel like we sit at three, and I wonder how specific, how relevant is it to move from 2.9 to 3.1? Or how do we know if we're really making progress, when most people are kind of like, yeah, it's good?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think our data, you know, Phil and I, we were talking about this. You can see that the data really hasn't changed much.
Yeah.
And so, in some ways, I feel like that means that we're making, we're actually making progress, because we're not seeing a decline in any of those results. One of the things we could do is we can take it like to the 10th, like the 100th place to see if there's, you know, some change. But whether we stay at a 3.3, 3.4, or a 3.1, or 3.2, a lot of those differences are not like really significant. So, I, I feel like what we're doing is we're staying on track. And a three is, although four is always the, the most desired, a three is a pretty, it's a desired result from the base as well.
Mm-hmm.
And, and if there were spots where people can comment, so on our LCAP surveys, there's a lot of area for people to, to be descriptive, right, to say what they might think, how to justify an answer. Whereas with this one, is there a narrative spot where they can say something, or is there just rank it, and that, and then you move on?
Yeah, so our LCAP survey does provide an area where they can go ahead and provide comments with each of the different sections. So, we do that, and we actually take that, and then we summarize that, and we share that with our LCAP advisory committee as well. We also take the comments that come directly from the block parties as well, and put that in, and we summarize those as well.
You did mention that we give data to principals specifically on their schools. Do we see a lot of variation between schools and the responses, students, staff, and?
Yeah, usually, you see a little bit more variance, just because of the sample size is much smaller. So, you will usually see that. Then they should be taking a look at that as they develop their SIPs, so we make sure that we provide those, we provide that data in a timely manner as well. But yes, there, there's definitely more vol, more variance in schools, just because of the sample size compared to.
Mm-hmm. So, really, the best way to get better data would probably be to increase our sample size, and then it'd be more specific.
Yes.
To change.
Doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna see more variance.
Mm-hmm.
But yes, obviously.
Reliability.
Having a large sample size is, is better.
Mm-hmm. Because I think we have like less than probably 2% of our parents that responded, right?
We do, we, we try our best to, to share out all the blackboard messages.
Yeah.
Pick it off during the block party. So, we try our best, but it doesn't mean that we can't try harder. So, we'll continue to find other ways to, to really share. We did our best also in terms of social media platforms as well, so.
Well, I mean, we had over 3,000 students, and I think it's because there was a little icon, right?
That definitely helps.
They give them class time. It was an assignment. They had to do it.
We could put an icon on people's phones, just send it over to them, text them.
Talk to Jeremy about that. I don't know if that's something.
Direct text. How would you like that, parents?
I, I look at it, you know, a lot of times, if you're doing things right, people aren't gonna say anything.
Yeah. They're, they're really mad or really happy, usually.
Or, or busy, right? Busy, and, yeah, okay.
Can I ask, also on the California standards for state, standards for conditions of learning, we're at full implementation, I think, and we have been sitting there for a long time. What would it look like, what would it take to get to that sustainability? What's the difference between a four and a five?
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that comes into play is we always are doing an adoption on, so for example, we just finished in history social adoption. We're actually moving into the math adoption. Our math textbooks.
That set us back.
Yeah, so our math, our, our math textbooks are 10 years old. So, teachers are looking for like a newer version, so we're gonna actually start the pilot process. So, for some teachers, I think when they reply to this, it's because we've had the same curriculum for quite a while, although we try to provide some supplemental resources that are a little bit more updated. But, but that's usually where you'll see some of the variances with, with the different adoptions coming in. And that's just something that cycles. So, for example, after math, we'll do ELA. After ELA, we'll do science, so there will always be an adoption process happening.
So unless we did it all at once, we really wouldn't get to that five?
Not necessarily, it just really depends on, on the, the survey results. But, but that is one of the factors that, for example, I remember history, for history social studies, that was always in the threes.
People were concerned about that.
Yeah, we were just waiting for the next adoption to happen, and you'll notice now it's in the fours, so.
Okay. And these results were, the surveys were done before we started implementing the new curriculum then? Because we just adopted it this school year?
Yeah, so these questions were included in the LCAP survey, and that was back in November, right around-
And we might see a difference next year, if that's the pain point. Okay, thank you.
I want to make sure I don't, I want to make sure I don't forget James. James, do you have questions for this presentation?
No questions.
Okay. He said no, right? Okay.
That, that was my question. When were the, when was the survey done? You said November?
Yes, it went from November all the way through basically almost the end of December, I believe, right around December.
Okay. I, I was just, I mean, I'm happy to see that, especially with our students. We got 100 and so many more, and our numbers are still up. I mean, there's still room for improvement, I feel like. But how do we get more parents and families to participate? I mean, it's pretty sad at 211.
Well, if you, if you said it's November through December, that's really a busy, busy time for families. I mean, if you think about it, it's the holidays, it's, everyone's fairly busy. It might not be the-
Do it around the busy time, Thanksgiving, Christmas?
Well, part of the other, so after we get the results, then we have to go ahead and analyze it, we have to provide it to the LCAP advisory committee for ESSER, then start working on the LCAP. So we have to kind of backwards plan. We could possibly open it up a little bit earlier if needed. Also, the other part is, sometimes the survey is pretty long, because there's a lot of questions that we want to find out about. So that, that's also something that we've been kind of wrestling with as well. But we definitely know that we would like to get more responses, especially from the community. If you add in all the block party comments as well, the numbers would significantly rise. But it is something that we're constantly talking about, what can we do more to just get more parents to, to complete the survey?
Okay. PTAs, get to work. That's what we can do.
I think one thing we shouldn't do is require parents to fill out the survey before we return their children to them at the end of, I don't think that would be a good idea.
Be kidnapping? Kidnapping, maybe?
It would be napping, Bev.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you guys so much for this information in conjunction with our LCAP. You guys have been very, very busy, and we really appreciate it. You might be able to take some vacation time after this meeting. Okay. Moving along, item B is dual-language program expansion process presentation. I know this was something that we had requested to take a look at, our DLA program, and, and what the process is to consider expanding, so thank you.
Good evening, President Berryman, board members, Superintendent Dr. Pletka, cabinet members, and everyone joining us both in person and from home. I am Merlinda Soltero-Riz, and I am the Chief Academic Officer in Educational Services. And today, I will be sharing the process regarding the potential expansion of our dual-language academy program. This presentation will cover the phases involved in the process. In this initial phase, we will establish a strong foundation for the possible expansion. The educational services team will form a subcommittee of the multilingual task force who will serve as the central discussion forum, ensuring we follow proper processes throughout the potential expansion. Throughout this period, we will provide the subcommittee with a historical perspective on our current DLA program, distribute surveys to families and communities to thoroughly assess our community needs and interests regarding dual-language education, host community forums, analyze neighborhood demographics surrounding potential sites to ensure program alignment with community needs, collaborate with FIDA and CSEA to address staffing concerns throughout the process, and finally, conduct a financial analysis. At the end of this phase, we will present an update to the board detailing our findings and recommendations. Following the board's guidance from the earlier phase, we are set to enter an active development stage. This period signifies our shift from planning to implementation, focusing on increasing community awareness and preparing our staff. We will do this by hosting informational meetings for both staff and community members to boost awareness and encourage involvement, conduct public announcements throughout various channels to kickstart the enrollment process, visit internal and external successful dual-language programs to gather valuable insights, begin the staffing process with interviews and specialized training for the chosen teachers, staff, and administration, and we will place orders for materials and furniture needed for the new program location. In the months before our launch, we will concentrate on quality assurance and preparation. This stage signifies our last round of quality checks, ensuring we are fully ready for a successful debut. In this final phase, we will review class lists to ensure balanced enrollment in accordance with the dual-language model, arrange classrooms with all necessary materials and resources, create a detailed year-long calendar highlighting program events to enhance community engagement, and finalize the arrangements for the grand opening celebration. On the first day of school for the 2026-2027 academic year, we will mark our official go-live date for expand, for the expanding program. During the grand opening, we will host a celebration that includes a ribbon-cutting ceremony, inviting district leadership, community partners, and families to join us, organize a welcome walkthrough to help new families, collect feedback from parents regarding their initial experiences, establishing a foundation for ongoing program evaluation, and finally, this celebration will recognize the collaborative efforts that brought this expansion to life, and foster a positive atmosphere for the program's future. I don't know if you can recognize some of the little ones there, but at this time, thank you for your attention during this presentation.
Thank you. So I believe we probably have a few questions regarding the presentation. Who would like to start? Vanessa, would you like to start? Questions? Comments?
I, I have a question. I know you were talking about distributing surveys to all families in the elementary sites. Am I assuming that the surveys are to see if there's interest, and where there is the most interest in the area, and, right? What do those surveys look like? What kind of questions are you asking parents?
So we would be asking them if they're interested in the dual-language program. Have they heard of our dual-language program? And if the dual-language program was at a particular, a different site other than their own school, homeschool, would they be willing to be participating in that, in that program as well? So different questions like that, just to gear the interest, to see what the community is looking for. But it would go to the entire district, and then also to surrounding schools where our dual-language programs are.
Okay, so the questions of, are you interested in the dual-language program? And would you, if you're interested, would, these would be all different questions, correct?
Yes.
Because I've heard from a lot of parents who are interested in the dual-language program, but they don't have transportation to take their children, so they don't bother filling out any, any paperwork or anything that has to do with a program that they're interested in, because they just have no way of getting their children there. So if we could separate questions and be very specific, that would be great, so that we can cater to those families as well. That way, we can consider something that is, if we do get a big number of parents that are interested, that would be something that we take into considerate, location, into consideration, because they don't have transportation.
Okay, thank you.
That was, that was one of my biggest questions.
Do you want to continue?
Just, I mean, without gauging community interest specifically, what is the sense of whether FSD is ready to add another, maybe Spanish language class at another school?
Yeah, so right now, at a few of our schools, when we started this process in February, we had probably like five to seven parents at various schools that were interested. And that, that would be taking schools from that actual student's, school's population. So there, there's a small interest, some schools more than others, but we have to really look at how much it would impact the current school enrollment versus the need.
As I recall, there were a lot of different factors that made Raymond a good site for the first program, and part of it was space.
Yeah.
And then Pacific Drive, I think, was, maybe there was more community interest. What are we looking at for possible sites that have space currently?
That's a very good question. So one thing, we, we kind of want some of the, what we're looking for to come out organically in the committee when we start in August, but space is definitely one thing. A school that has no programs that, you know, and enrollment is low, the need from parents or the, the parents expressing interest. And the other thing would be a willing principal. We definitely want a school leader that, that definitely wants to implement this program, and is willing to, to just kind of take it and run with it.
And then so, is that part of the process currently, or something that we're waiting for down the road?
No, it's absolutely part of the process. So once we convene in August, then we, we have invited a number of principals and teachers and, to the table, and we'll, we'll go from there and organically see what happens.
Thank you.
Just before I forget, I did have a question about this subcommittee.
Yes.
I know it says elementary parents. Where are you thinking about, are you asking DLA parents, or who are you thinking about asking, and which principals? Are you thinking about like Christina, who is part of the DLA? What is, what is your thought on who you would include in the subcommittee?
Absolutely. So right now, the invitation is going to go out to all of our elementary principals, because we want to make, we don't want to exclude anybody. And we want to look at, like I said, who's interested, have parents come to the table who are, who share an interest and would bring other parents to the table, teachers who are certainly interested in doing this. And then obviously, there may be some people that we tap on the shoulder and say, hey, we would like you to be a part of this committee if they don't come willingly, so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm a little confused with your answer. You said you're going to open it to any principal that is interested in being a part of the subcommittee, or who's interested in maybe having DLA in their school?
Having DLA in their school.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay. I was like, wait a minute, you're, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes.
Just as a side note, we could reach out, for example, to Christina and ask if some of our veterans could be part of it.
Yes.
And she actually said she, she would, so she agreed to it as well.
You want to go? I'll wait.
Well, obviously, I'm, I see the benefits of this program. My, both my kiddos have been through it, two different schools, and I firmly believe in it. And you saw pictures of my baby and, and me 10 years ago. But I think I'm especially excited about the impact it has for our Spanish-speaking community, because we see the impact it has of not only increasing academic performances in Spanish, and English, and math, it really is such a great opportunity for our kids that are multilingual learners to just thrive. And it brings a sense of confidence and pride to the community, to the school, to the parents that bring that asset to, to school with them. And so I'm really excited about how this has the potential to help close some of those academic achievement gaps as well in our high multilanguage communities. So some of my questions come from that. Are we, at this point, are we only considering Spanish? Because we also have our Korean program. But are we looking just to expand through Spanish right now? Just to clarify.
Well, that's the conversation that we need to have with the committee. That is the conversation that we've had so far with the principal that we talked to, him, Christina coming to the table. But it's certainly open to other ideas and possibilities based on what the committee brings forward.
I mean, I think, certainly when we think about closing achievement gaps and challenges, I think that there's so much potential for this to be really critical tool for success of our kids, if we look at Spanish. But I, I guess that's something maybe through the survey, we can find out more if there's interest and opportunity there for other languages, okay? And then, so when you say that you're sending it, so we're sending it to all parents throughout the community and asking them, are they interested? Okay. I do think your question about kind of being specific about, would you consider sending your child to the DLA program if it's at your homeschool, if it's at a different school, two different questions is really critical, right? And then there, I know that obviously geographically in our schools, there's a lot of schools that are, families that live half a mile from here, half a mile from there, and the line is drawn, but they're equal distance. So I think that there is, maybe you could even give that option, like, would you go if it was Maple? Would you go if it was Richmond? Would you go if it, you know, because there are a lot of schools that are physically, geographically close, that would maybe give us a better perspective of where families are willing and able to, to move, to be, participate in this program. I would also encourage, as we think about that committee and getting a couple representatives to make sure we're going, obviously, you've got the preschool, you know, because it's oftentimes those families of not yet in the FSD system that are going to be the early adopters of a new program, because they don't have their older kid already going somewhere else, and they have to switch. And so it makes sense to join at, at that first stage of young parenthood. One of the things that's mentioned is reviewing neighborhood demographics. But I think, while, you know, I just mentioned that I think looking at the home languages of the community is critical, but I do think that DLA programs actually, do, obviously, we know attract students from other schools. So I think, will you be considering impact on neighboring schools if students are transferring their enrollment?
Yes.
Yeah. Absolutely. Because if we think about kids moving from one neighborhood to another, that means decreasing enrollment at another, and so-
Absolutely. In addition to that, and Dr. Hammack has spoken to this in our, in our meetings, is it also requires teachers with specific credentials.
Absolutely.
So we want to make sure that we, you know, look at that impact as well, because if we're pulling from a program that you, just has a CLAD credential, we might not be able to transfer a teacher over to another site to fill a need, because they don't have the B-CLAD.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I think that, you know, that's one of my questions, is the thinking about recruitment, that next phase, in that we, I think traditionally have had a hard time recruiting the appropriate B-CLAD teachers and the qualifications for bilingual authorization. So are we looking at, you know, stipend bonuses, things like that, that we would possibly use to, to fulfill that need?
That would be a negotiation issue that we would address with FETA. I will say, in our most recent round of recruitments, we've had very good luck getting fully-credential B-CLAD teachers in both Korean and Spanish.
Well, that's-
So our, our recruitment efforts have been, have been very good, and that slow, unfortunately for teachers, but fortunate for us, hiring in Orange County has slowed down, and we've had a number of districts around us who have also laid teachers off. So we've been able to see a lot of good candidates being sent to us.
Well, that's, that's great. You know, I would say that that wouldn't be off the table if that's what FETA was willing to negotiate with us, but, you know, however we can get the best folks is great. Will you be looking at two classrooms versus one classroom? Have you, or does that yet to be decided?
Yeah. It all depends on the interest and the numbers that come out, as similar to what you mentioned with the TK versus starting with K. So I think the surveys will dictate kind of where we go.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I guess I'm referring more to the, just to be clear, two, like two kindergartens, two first grades, where you have 60 kids versus 30, so the model- How many people sign up? Yeah, depends on the numbers then. Okay, okay. I have just a couple of thoughts, as we look at especially Development Phase Two, as someone who's been through it. I mean, one, obviously, I'm sure you're thinking about family visits to existing DLA programs, you know, not just, it says, you know, like outside schools. I think it's important for our staff to see how it works, but also for families to see it in action and see the positive results of what, what is possible. But then, I think, I, I know you know, probably know this, but I want to emphasize the importance of having a conversation with the staff at the program site, and the impact that it will have in their community, right? And then probably also the parents, and the PTA, and the, all the groups there, because it's a major change for the community, right? And so whether that's talking to the staff who are going to remain in the traditional English-only program, and the impact that means for, what does it look like if in five years from now, we don't need as many teachers, and the classrooms are moot-changing, and, you know, that impact that it has, I think it's really critical for that conversation to be open and transparent from day one. And think about the positives, as well as some of the negative impact that it will have, as change, as always, can be hard in that process. Doesn't mean it's not worth it, but it's definitely a change for the community.
Absolutely. So once we get to the December phase-
Yeah.
There, there is a lot of me- There, there is a lot of meetings that need to be held in terms of meeting with the staff and making sure that everybody's on board and they understand what this means for their school, what the process is going to look like that they're going to undergo from now, from December until June.
And then the next eight years as things progress.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Seven years. It depends on TK.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm all for it. Okay, James?
No questions.
Okay. I, I have some clarifying questions.
I, I am, I'm happy that we're looking at this and I do know that we've done this before. So it's not something that's brand new for you. And as we're talking through it, it's bringing back all the memories. I don't think that, I mean, this is something that has been a priority for this board for a very long time. So I'm, I'm very happy that we're looking at this. Timing-wise, when we look at the phases.
Yes.
What I think of is, you know, I go back to, we do a lot in our district. Right? We do a lot of things. We are very busy. We keep our staff very, very busy. There are lots and lots of benefits to this program. There are undoubtedly a lot of benefits to this program. What I'm looking at is how much time, for, for one, the initial planning phase, right? So what, what I'm thinking is we're gathering the troops, you're putting together your community, you're surveying people to find out if there's interest. After that, you come together and then you'll know kind of, you know, there's interest, there's not interest. Do we have waiting lists? Do we have waiting lists right now?
Do.
Right? So we have waiting lists right now. So, so we're going to look at all that, right? And, and at the end of that first initial planning phase, how much time goes into that? Approximately staff time to get to, to the November, okay, now we have a recommendation? Can you, can you, I'm, I'm looking at like each, each phase, how much time is that?
You know, it's, it's hard to quantify that. But I would say at least, you're going to spend at least a few five to 10 hours a week. I mean, that's just honestly. Because there's just so much, on our backend.
Oh, no, right.
But there's just going to be a lot in the, the data analysis, talking to people, building relationships and making sure we do this the right way so that it's not rushed and that it launches successfully. So I would say it's no different than the, the nurture or the care that we're going to take in launching the, you know, a school like off Nicholas. You know, I mean, there's going to be some care, some, lots of hours spent making sure that that's successful when it opens in August. But I would say anywhere from three to, three to five hours a week that we're going to probably spend just dedicated to this and, but it's worth it. It, it's necessary.
So would you say if, if in fact we go through the process and it comes apparent that yes, this looks like it's, it, we've got, we've got interest and it looks like we can, we can do this? Because I remember it's nerve-wracking, right? If you don't get enough, enough people at the end, you've put this time into it, you don't have the people. Would you say that if we were to, as a board, thumbs up on this one and you guys went forward, would this be something that would be a major, like a major initiative during this next school year within the district office?
Yes.
I, I, I just want to, to.
I mean, just, you know, we, you know, we like challenges and this is something we believe we can make successful. We've had a lot of success. You have a staff that believes in the value of this.
Absolutely.
But I, I don't want to sugarcoat it. There's, there's hours involved. I will say hundreds of hours involved.
So as, as a board, we need to also realize that, that as we're going through this process, we ask a lot of our district. And so if this is a major initiative and we go there, that we all have to be willing to say, yes, this is something that we're going to, we're going to prioritize. And we'll have conversations about that, but I just want to make sure that as a board, we all know how much time. And I think our district tends to do things that look easy. But there's a lot of hours that go into it and, and, you know, and, and I just want to say, I mean, I, I want to make sure that we all know this is a major initiative. This is something that will spend a lot of time and effort.
Yeah.
And definitely worth it. I'm, I, there is no doubt about the fact that I, you know, I believe in the program. I just want to make sure that we're all understanding how much time and effort is going to go into this.
Definitely. I mean, but these are the things that like we, even though it's long hours, we get excited about.
Love it. Right, right.
You, you don't mind doing this when it's stuff that's good for.
You guys really don't mind anything, to be quite honest.
So, but the good thing is that because we've created so many moments of pause in between.
Yeah.
We will update you every step of the way with, be it through the communique or update or whatnot. So that way you know, hey, this is what's coming from the committee. This is what we're saying. This is what we're hearing. So that way, by the time we get to November, it's not a secret where we are or what's, what's, what our report is going to be.
And, and it really does work organically. I mean, I, when we first did this and it was Raymond and, and kind of going through that process, it does, it does, someone will step up and say, this is really what I want to do. And it, and it all will work out. Ruthie's point about making sure that all staff, whenever you do identify that one school, because there were growing pains, you know, in when we first started with dual immersion and, and knowing that, you know, the first couple of years were rocky.
Yeah.
There was a lot of issues. So, I mean, we learned by going through it, but making sure that we, we do bring everybody in and, and it's something that as a team, is a team effort for, for our students, so.
For sure. And I think that's the benefit that Christina brings and Stephanie brings and some of her staff members that have been there since the inception of those programs, that they can actually speak to their experiences so that people know, hey, it's not all, you know.
Rainbows and butterflies?
Absolutely.
Okay. But, but well worth it, like you said.
Absolutely.
Very well, okay.
Just a, I guess a final maybe comment then. This process could result in no new DLA program, right? I mean, and halfway through, it could be determined that, you know, this, this just time isn't right. Correct?
Absolutely. Depending on what the survey yields, what the, what the committee brings forward to you all. And then we take direction from you as the board.
Right.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
To Bev's point, I assume it's under your leadership, Dr. Brown and Arlinda, Charlotte Ruiz, that will be leading this. I know the position that Ruth Gare had before is, has been some shifting. Is there a person that we're going to be able to hire to take some of the day-to-day labor of this project?
Yes. So we are in the process of hiring a DLA TOSA for Spanish.
Okay.
We have our Korean TOSA already in place. And so we're just looking for a compliment to her. And then that, that person will be responsible for the professional development, you know, the training, the curriculum, the overseeing, some of the day-to-day things. And like you mentioned, helping, supporting our newcomers through this process and our ELD students, bridging that gap. So all those things I'm super excited about and we just can't wait to get that person on board.
Okay. So that would be a big compliment to a new school site taking on this program, that they would have that support person.
Yeah.
A TOSA on their side. Okay. Great.
So, so do you need a thumbs up to go ahead and start phase one of this?
Right. You're, so you're, you're not actually voting or, you're just giving us direction and it's a significant amount of time as a board collectively to begin this process and for sure to, to execute phase one. And then after phase one, we would come back to the board and then ultimately you would decide. But, so we're looking for a thumbs up, direction to move forward with the planning.
All right. Well, we have principals from what I hear that are in.
Our side?
Not the principal.
No, I know. I'm just saying. We have principals that are interested. We have a waiting list and we have two ladies right there on the podium saying it's, we got it, it's easy, let's do it. Two thumbs up for me.
Okay, James, are there any concerns that you have?
No.
Okay. All right. And I'm thinking that's.
Thumbs up.
Run.
All right.
Bring it back in November.
We're off to pieces.
Don't walk, run.
Yeah.
Run.
Okay. Now we're on to item C. So I do have a public comment for this one. So Angela North, if you would like to come up and, and comment on our gifted and talented present, education presentation. Thank you for sitting, for, for enjoying all of the other presentations.
You know, it's, it's actually really informative. It helps me understand why, why we fill out those surveys. I'll fill them out.
And you go home and tell all your friends. Angela, were one of those 211 parents filled it out?
Fully transparent. Last year I filled it out, or 2023, but 2024 I didn't. Sorry, Phil.
Closure.
You can take the fifth. You can take the fifth.
Long survey.
Oh, see, there you go. It's a long survey.
But I know it's important, so thank you. I feel like this podium got taller. May I, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Board Members, Superintendent, for including the GATE program in today's agenda. Acknowledging that a vote is not scheduled today, we Acacia families that I speak for ask for this board to overturn the district's decision to remove impacted incoming fifth and sixth graders from the GATE, from their GATE designated class. As of May this year, two of our incoming fifth graders have been informed they will be able to stay in their designated class, including my own son. But I'm still here. There is still, as far as we know, one incoming fifth grader who is going to be sidelined and, and taken out of the class. We also ask that the board allow for this grader to remain in his cohort. We ask that the eight incoming sixth graders remain in their cohort, including the two twins who were supposedly randomly chosen. It is our understanding that no zoned students would lose a space at Acacia if the board were to overturn this decision. I represent over 20 families to name a few. The Cole family, the Turkin family, Warren Kimbrough family, Chappelle's, the North family, Casey's, Mirrors, the Patel's, the Lee family, the Chen's, the Deji family, the Rabe family, the June's, the Doan family, the Rakovsky family, the Johnsons, the Delgados and the Castanada family. These are some of the Acacia families with upper grade students who have been impacted by this broken gate enrollment procedure. We are a diverse set of families coming from different racial, ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds. So on April 8th, when one of our wonderful board members, and perhaps with good intentions, stated, while it is admirable that Korean parents want their child to be in GATE, they should, and I quote, "trust administrators and loosen up." We were extremely surprised by this harmful statement and questioned how then we were being perceived as a group, given that the faces of this effort happened to be two Korean-American parents. The district, I know, has so many hurdles to overcome, especially given the current political climate, federal funding cuts and extreme voices attacking the good work of our administrators. But this is not what that is. We are a group of parents who have followed process, procedure and trusted our administrators. We are trying to be constructive and offer useful input. It is because a procedure is broken and by the district's own admission did not follow and was not transparent with their process and impacts our kids and future kids. This is why we were, we are speaking up. So no, I will not loosen up on this matter. And for the record, I, as a Korean-American child to immigrant parents who had no clue what GATE was, but worked hard to survive, to hear this stereotype suggesting Asian parents to be uptight and overly pushing their children academically, being perpetuated at this level is a slippery slope to greater discrimination. Please, some intentionality to fight against these biases is needed, especially now when people of all races and backgrounds need to band together against abuse of power. So let me be clear that this group of parents is not what this stereotype suggests. Our students are self-motivated. They tested into GATE early on. Some were recommended by the teachers in the second grade. There was thought and resources put into placing these students into designated classes. They achieved academically and are good citizens in their classrooms. We all know how important mental and emotional health is and the district has incorporated it into their curriculum. That's what this is about. These students need the continuity and their classroom environment and classmates they have known for half of their lives. We know for a fact, as you heard from a former student in March, on the immense negative impact that occurs. It will be traumatic, especially at the start of puberty. We are asking the district to exercise what the district says they value and put these students first. You will have to deal with frustrated parents regardless, but what will minimize the negative impact for these students at Acacia and fulfill the original intent of the program that the district worked hard to bring them into? Thank you for your consideration and courage to do what is right by these dozen or so students.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. So we, go ahead. Dr. Brown? We have asked for a presentation on our existing GATE procedure policies to take a look at what, what we've done, what, and where we can go. So, thank you.
And I do want to say thank you before Trish presents. She did an amazing job on this presentation as she's done presenting to parents throughout the year. So she's created an overview of what GATE is, what the process looks like and how that operates at Acacia. And I do want to say thank you to Rachel for being here as well and the job she's done for her parents at communicating the message. So.
Trish, take it, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Berryman, esteemed trustees, Superintendent Dr. Pleka, Cabinet and FSD community present, present and listening. I'm Patricia Childs, the Coordinator in Educational Services, and I'll be providing a brief overview of FSD's GATE services. There's a little bit of an overview of the topics that we'll be covering on the right, but I wanted to draw your attention to our mission statement on the left. The mission statement was updated by our Equity in GATE Advisory Task Force. It took us quite a long time, but we really focused on each one of those words in order to provide what's best for all of our students.
Give you a moment to read. Like, I don't know how to make it go to the next slide without a clicker.
All right. So why gifted education? We know it's important to provide gifted education and services and strategies for our students in FSD because we know they all have unique needs. Research shows that gifted students have specific, unique needs. When we consider the qualities of a gifted child, we find that they often learn content more quickly, they have a need for less repetition, a desire for more information. All of this necessitates appropriate challenge. In FSD, we use depth, complexity, enrichment, acceleration to provide opportunities for students to make continuous growth. Sometimes we call this a higher ceiling in which they can reach. We also know they have different needs. In order to reach their potential, all students, but especially GATE students, need that depth of learning. They need to focus on their interests and they need support for their specific social, emotional needs. We know that they have social, emotional needs that are specific to gifted students. Sometimes they have asynchronous development, meaning that they might develop at different levels academically versus socially. They also need to be with their peers. They tend to challenge one another. They tend to have similar mindsets or needs. Sometimes we call them quirky, but they support and, and challenge one another. The California Department of Education decides, or they have delineated several categories of gifted education. We typically think of gifted education as that intellectual ability focusing on their academic needs. academic needs. We have added, here in Fullerton, the visual and performing arts category. That's something that we found that most districts, especially elementary districts, do not have. It's something that we're really proud of and that we are definitely a leader in this area. I've given presentations to other coordinators in other districts about our arts program because, again, it doesn't really exist at that elementary level, and so it's another way that we can support students who have gifts and talents in the arts. Our next slide is about our identification process. So our process is focused on equity. We've used current and best research to ensure that we include all students from all backgrounds. We know that nationally, we're finding that we aren't identifying equitably, so we've made a lot of changes and improvements to ensure that we are using those best practices. So one of those best practices is universal screening. So in second grade, we test all of our second grade students unless a family chooses to opt out. This is one of those easiest and best ways to promote equity in gifted education. Another best practice is to use multiple pathways, so that it's not just one point in time, one test score at one time. We're looking at multiple ways and multiple pathways for students to qualify. We use cognitive ability testing as well as achievement data. We use a creativity piece. We use something called the HOPE Scale, which was developed out of Purdue University to identify students who may not traditionally be identified. We have a Gate Identification Team who meets and reviews all of this data. It takes us quite a bit of time. And we also look at both local and national norms. That's one of the more recent pieces of evidence that's come out of the research that is another best practice. We are using both types of norms. It's not a one or the other, but a student can qualify based on those national norms, meaning that they are, say, in that top 5% or 10% nationally. But they can also qualify based on local norms, meaning that we are looking at the students at a particular site, so with the similar demographics. All right, so next up, we're going to talk about placement options. So national, state, and local Gate experts recommend that gifted students be grouped together. However, there are many different models that are appropriate and beneficial. Here in FSD, we provide choice. We have, our students who are identified can choose to stay at their home school, or they can move to their particular Gate-designated site. So if they choose to move to their Gate-designated school, there's a chart there in the bottom right that shows which school that is. So for example, a student from, say, Beechwood, their designated site would be Hermosa Drive. So when they, if they choose that Gate-designated school, that the chart, and that chart has been, this chart of home schools and Gate-designated schools, that was developed quite a while ago, and it was based on space availability. It was also based on proximity, so, you know, we don't want them to have to travel too far. But once they select that school, so for example, using the Beechwood example, if a Beechwood student selects Hermosa Drive, that becomes their new home school. I know, similar to dual language, they don't have to go through the enrollment process each year. That is their home school. We also have our students in dual language, and they, we want to make sure that they also have their Gate met. So our dual language...
I was just, I mean, wondering, as we're listening, I don't want to stop you because you're on a roll, but I think, would you prefer that we hold our questions till the end of your presentation? Or shall we just wait till you finish with your thought and then ask that question? You tell us what you would prefer.
I'm fine either way. How about if I pause after this, after I finish?
After each page, maybe?
Sure.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I was just going to mention on this slide, dual language students, we don't want our dual language students to have to choose between going to their dual language school or going to their Gate school. So we train all of our dual language teachers to also be Gate teachers. So they go through Gate certification. In fact, many of our dual language kinder, first, and second grade teachers are also Gate-certified, so that our students then can have their needs met without having to leave that program. We find that, we know that dual language is a very valuable program, so we kind of like to try to keep it as the best of both worlds. All right, I'll pause, so...
Are our multi-age teachers also Gate-certified?
Many of them are. I know that at, that they, I would have to double-check on whether it's all, but I do know that at Rolling Hills, one of them is someone who helps teach the other teachers. And at Orange Thorpe, I believe, I don't know which ones are, but yes, they are all, any teacher can become Gate-certified, and we always encourage them. I know at Rolling Hills that we do have some Gate students who really wanted to stay in the multi-age program, and they were relieved that their teacher is Gate-certified.
Can you, go ahead.
Oh, if you would just clarify, you said that once the student's family selects the school that is their kind of Gate-identified school, that's their home school. But we're hearing from our Acacia families that that was a challenge, right? So they've said, "I want my home school to be this one. I want to be in the Gate class because of that." Are they then have the same opportunities to stay in that Gate class, or just the school?
So the difference is, using our designated chart, feeder schools, they chose a school that wasn't their feeder school.
Okay, so if they, like, if someone from Commonwealth chooses Acacia, they stay at Acacia?
They have priority, yes.
Uh-huh. Okay. Or Beechwood would stay at Hermosa, no matter what?
Correct.
Okay.
So if you, so in part of that was, I believe that, again, this was developed before my time, but I know that it was developed because we knew that there was limited space.
Okay, so if they choose the designated Gate school, they have the guarantee to stay there, but not if they choose a different Gate school?
And we do see that, you'll notice that Laguna Road only feeds to Laguna Road, because they were impacted. And again, I don't know the rationale behind why which schools go where. I believe it was proximity, but I believe it was because they didn't have space for additional...
Any new students to come in.
So we do still have families who choose to do that. We do still have families who say, "Oh, but I want to transfer there," so...
To Laguna.
Let me jump in here, too. There's still an interplay of law, and somebody that lives in the boundary of a school has legal priority over everybody else, even some of our own internal rules. And so that can be a factor in some decisions, that if, there are some exceptions to that. If somebody, we can honor our enrollment period, meaning if someone were to move in tomorrow to, within a school boundary area, and they lived in that area, that we can hold out to the following open enrollment period, but they would then be guaranteed a spot in there if there was somebody in that school that was not a resident school. So does this happen all the time? No, but occasionally it does, and there is an interplay. You know, Trish is talking about our internal rules, but there is law that sometimes supersedes some of this.
She said that this chart that we have that lists Laguna Road and Sunset Lane both having their own program, I mean, this is older, so have we, have we, have we looked at this, at these numbers? I mean, it seems like there might be other schools that now are running out of room, or, I mean, that could be with, I mean, again, I mean, these are, have we looked at this chart and really spent some time on it lately?
So I think that would be in the, in the, a few...
Okay, I'm sorry. Maybe I should just wait till the end, then? Okay.
Yeah, we do have...
We'll come back to that? Okay.
That is part of the...
Okay, all right. Okay, then I'll, then we'll just stop and let you continue.
Okay. All right, so services and strategies. Gate students are taught the same California grade-level standards as their peers. Sometimes that, there's, that's a confusion point. It's the same standards for all of our fourth graders or all of our fifth graders. However, in order to increase the rigor, teachers are trained to differentiate, to support that higher ceiling that we talked about earlier. So teachers are using research-based strategies such as depth, complexity, novelty, enrichment, acceleration, a focus on student interests, in order to keep our students engaged and to increase that level of rigor. In addition, the Gate Office offers additional opportunities for our students, including Gate Saturday Talent Academies and the Gate Summer Scholars Program, in which we dig more deeply into a variety of topics that the students are interested in as well.
Could you give an example of what that looks like to go into something like depth and complexity or novelty? Especially as I think about, you know, even our special education, we adapt programs to meet the needs of students. And some students, you know, they're all over the place in what they're ready for and be stretched towards. So can you explain what it looks like in a Gate classroom?
Definitely. So if you look at the icons in the upper-left corner, language of the discipline, details, patterns, rules, so what our teachers will do is teach those grade-level standards, and then they will challenge the students to dig more deeply into that content. So sometimes they might say, "Hey, I want you to look at a different perspective. What if, as we were learning this, if we were reading this novel, what if it was told by the best friend instead of the main character? What if it was told at a different point in time? So across, changes over time? What were the ethical issues that came up in this?" So it allows our students to go beyond that initial comprehension of the topic, and I'm just using language arts as an example, and it allows them to go deeper and to ponder different thoughts. It's one of the easiest ways for teachers to differentiate, because you can do that with the whole class. So you can say, you know, "Everybody gets this opportunity." Some students might continue moving higher, maybe they're having greater discussions, and other students might not get there, which is just fine, because their needs might need, they might have different needs. So it's a fantastic way to dig deeper into any content. When I teach the teachers, we will use nursery rhymes, and they realize, even with nursery rhymes, we can go deeper and with more complexity and ask really good questions and ponder the ethical issues of Jack and Jill fetching water. And, you know, so we have fun with it, but any content can be, can be enriched just through this, the icons of depth and complexity.
I can see the value of all of our teachers being trained in this, because I feel like this approach is absolutely applicable and fabulous for every single classroom. You don't have to be Gate-identified to benefit from this process.
Absolutely. We've done training with entire school sites, so that they all can, can practice this in their classroom. We have, many teachers across the district have gone through Gate certification. We continue to offer it year after year. That's on the next slide. And it's something that's good for all students. It was not developed to be kept. It's, it was intended for all students, but it's more of a necessity for Gate students. All right, so speaking of training our teachers, we do offer both teacher and parent education. Our teachers are offered Gate certification. It's a two-year process. It's open to all teachers, not just Gate teachers, so any teacher can participate. We are part of the OCC Gate Collaborative, meaning that we have worked with the Orange County... Thank you. I didn't bring my water with me. Thank you. It's over there. I didn't want to bring it. So the OCC Gate Collaborative was developed in Orange County, and we all made our process unified, so that we were covering the same content. We're each doing it our own way. But it's, so that means that our teachers who earn their Gate certificate, it's recognized throughout Orange County, so if they were to leave and go somewhere else, not that they would want them to, you know, we don't want them to, but if they did, the certificate would be valid there as well. We also have many opportunities for our teachers to grow professionally. There's a list there. We're very involved in the Orange County Gate community, as well as our state community, the California Association for the Gifted. We also have opportunities for our parents. We have a Gate Parent Organization. There's, they have opportunities to learn, but also to network with other parents. We also have webinars and conferences that our parents are invited to participate in. And our last slide, our next steps. So we will be forming a Gate Committee in the fall of 2025. We're planning to make our, our Gate Committee would be made of parents, teachers, and administrators who represent our sites here in Fullerton. Our goal is to review our current program and processes and make recommendations for any program updates. And I think that brings us to the end. And I know there's questions.
Okay, who would like to start?
I will. Go ahead. Start us off. I appreciate this chance to really dig in and learn a lot more about something that I would say I don't have a great understanding of. I was wondering, when we do the teacher training, and it's beyond just those who are Gate-identified classrooms, what is the expectation that the teacher then implements in the classroom? Because I know you can have training in your back pocket, not necessarily use it every day. So what, do we have expectations that they use it? How would they, especially if they're not a cluster-identified classroom? What does that look like?
So what we do, the two-year program, six classes each year, and so what the teachers do is they come together, they get taught a particular strategy. So for example, one of the first ones is depth and complexity. And so we go through all of the icons or the thinking prompts, and then we, we go through practical applications, and then they go back to their classrooms and they teach those lessons. If it's a kindergarten class, and we've had many of them, maybe they don't teach all 11. Maybe they teach three of them. If they're a sixth-grade class, we have higher expectation. They can do more. So they teach lessons to their students, they collect work samples, they write a reflection, and they submit a lesson plan. And then we, when we come back together, the first thing we always do is share, so they get to hear what their peers did as well, which is really nice, because they get more ideas. Whether they're continuing to implement it forever, that's up to them. But we do guarantee that they do it at least once, and many of them come back with just, they're wowed by what their students came up with, whether they're Gate-identified students or not. We know we miss Gate-identified students sometimes, and so it gives an opportunity for all students to participate. It's really fun when it's those kinder or first-grade teachers who think, "Oh, I don't know if my students can do this," and they come back and they were like, "Oh, my gosh." They, they just, they rose to the challenge. And so it's really fun to hear about how they've implemented it, and I think their enthusiasm shows me that they're probably going to continue using them.
They have to, there's a level of maintaining your certification, so to continuously stay... I should be in the mic. Yes.
They should, they have to continuously stay on top of the training. Every five years, Trish?
Two years, seven hours.
Yeah, so in order to maintain that certification, they have to continuously stay up on that practice, whether they're teaching Gate students or not, in the instance that they may be called upon to teach a Gate class or open a Gate program or move to another school.
But we don't offer a stipend or something for Gate certification or teachers?
We don't offer a stipend for the Gate certification, but if they do attend PLCs or they attend professional development that's outside of, then they would get paid.
Yeah. I guess one of my questions in asking that about the impact in the classroom would be, what's the impact for non-Gate students? How did they benefit, especially if they're like in a cluster classroom? Because I know, personal experience, I've seen every child can benefit, right, when there's these opportunities. So can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. I mean, I've heard stories from teachers who said, "Well, so-and-so didn't qualify," but they're really showing so much growth academically because it challenges them, them Once they get to junior high and high school, that Gate designation kind of goes away, right? They go into honors. And so there's also that understanding that we're giving them skills, we're giving them tools to dig more deeply into any content, whether it's, you know, whether they're in a Gate class or whether they're in a junior high school honors class. So it's providing those opportunities, and it's allowing those teachers to see maybe things that they didn't normally see, because they were teaching grade-level standards. So it's giving them that chance for them to have a higher ceiling. So it's giving them that chance for them to have a higher ceiling.
I've got a quick question here. When we talk about placement options, can you explain, we've got the four placement options, general education, Gate class, can you briefly explain each one of those designations?
Just gonna go back and, oh, thank you. Okay. Yes. So those placement options are what we find in the Gate world. That's not necessarily here in Fullerton. So that's out of the, there's a quote there from National, the National Association for Gifted Children. So that's what's given to us as far as what the options are. We can place them in a general education setting, in a Gate cluster, in a Gate pull-out program. So in some cases, the Gate program is a pull-out, you know, hour a day or after school. Or a self-contained Gate classroom, that would be like a magnet or a Gate-designated school. Or in some cases, it's a self-contained school. So those are just options. That's kind of the big picture of what options are available to us when we consider placement.
And can you explain the cluster? Because we have clusters. Explain that cluster.
Absolutely. So really, a cluster is a group of students that are, in which the Gate students are together with additional students who are not Gate-identified.
And they move up in grade level every year?
The Gate students, not necessarily. There's not research that shows that they have to stay with the exact same group. So for example, in some settings, not necessarily here, but in some settings, let's just say they have 30 Gate students. They might put 10 in each class, but then the next year, they might mix them up so that they interact with other students, not that same group. When I taught Gate, I noticed that by the time they got to me in sixth grade, they were like siblings, and they would poke at each other, and they knew how to... So I see that there is some benefit, right? Changing those...
Their social dynamics.
Yes, absolutely. So it just, the cluster really just means that there are students, the Gate students are grouped so that there's not, so that they are able to challenge one another.
And we have clusters in all of those, the Beachwood Commonwealth, all of those schools that aren't a designated site or not a DLA. All of our other schools have clusters, that there's an availability of clusters.
Yes.
And does that mean there's a grade-level teacher at every grade who's able to accommodate those kids as they move up in those clusters?
Yes.
Okay.
And are there clusters also at our Gate-designated schools?
In some cases, yes. It really depends. I mean, we call, we call our Gate-designated sites that those are Gate classes. If we're talking about the national kind of definition of a Gate cluster doesn't involve the number of students, but in here in Fullerton, we've sometimes said, you know, the numbers of students matter, but in some cases, we don't have a full class of Gate-designated students. So the remainder of the class would be filled with students who are not Gate-identified. So that would be kind of in that national definition of a cluster, that's kind of what it means. But we would call that a Gate class if they were a Gate-designated school.
So we can have a school that has a grade level, like a fifth-grade class at Fern Drive, that might have two students who are Gate-identified as a cluster in the classroom?
Yes. And the goal would be that they would not be separated. The goal would be, you know, whenever possible, that they're grouped.
Because it encourages conversation and dialogue and feeding off of one another and the ideas that they're generating together, right?
Definitely.
And the use of the icon.
Yeah. The teacher would...
I'm sorry. This is, this, James, did I hear correctly a little bit, a little while ago, that there's no research to indicate that keeping the clustered children together as they move up in grade is beneficial? That's counterintuitive, then what's the logic for keeping them in a designated class together as they go up?
So the research doesn't state that the exact same students stay together. So it, as a cohort. So they would still be clustered, but they wouldn't necessarily, if the cluster model being used has them in multiple groups, they don't have to stay in that exact same group. They might be with other Gate students from the other class the next year.
So is there...
Wait, so to clarify, so you have a Gate class of 30. There is no research to indicate that keeping them together as they go up in grade is beneficial? But if you have a cluster of five, there's also no research to indicate that keeping the exact same combination of five is beneficial?
No. I was using the example of a cluster in which we were grouping, say, 30 students in three different groups. So it's 10 in one class, 10...
With the general pop...
And in a third class. So that example would mean that the next year, you could put five from that first 10 with five from the second 10, right? So you're just mixing them differently?
Mixing and matching.
Yes. But they would still be with Gate peers.
Can you...
Right. So there's no research to, you're saying that there's no research to indicate that there's a benefit to keeping the clusters exactly the same year to year, right?
Correct. There is differing research. So some research will say that, other research will say it doesn't matter. So it, the quote that's on the slide, "Almost any form of grouping used will provide an academic or achievement gain." And that's really what the research shows, is that it doesn't really matter what form of grouping you're using, as long as, it's more important that they are grouped and that they are with trained teachers.
Then why have Gate-only classes?
It's a model, it's one of the options for the models. Some people, in some cases, that Gate classroom with only Gate students is a great option. In other situations, it's not. So I think it really just depends. I mean, again, the research gives you choice to choose what's best for the students and for the school.
So, well, more questions, James? I don't want to cut you off.
I do have more. I just wanted to ask the cluster-specific questions, and then I can wait for another turn.
Just to dial in again on this question, then, it could be just as beneficial, it sounds like, from the research to have, if we have 30 kids at a school, to have 10 and, you know, 20 and 15 in one class and 15 in another class, and then 15 other students of general education may also benefit if we have the capacity and the professional development of all the teachers in order to meet that need. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. And there could even be cross-sharing where, you know, one group goes with one teacher and one group goes with the other teacher, and they all can have more differentiating instruction and opportunities in that way.
Definitely.
And I'm assuming that that's one of the things that will be tossed around at, so in pulling together this group of people to look at all the different ways, options that people have, figure out maybe what would work here in Fullerton. I mean, maybe it's time to look at that and...
And I think one of our goals would also be to look at what else is happening around Orange County. What are other districts doing that is successful? Because we are fortunate in Southern California to have a pretty rich Gate community. In Northern California, there isn't. It's harder to find. So we have a really great community in Southern California where we get to share resources and share, you know, hey, what are you doing? What are you doing? So that would be part of what we would hope to do as well, is what are other successful models looking like?
And just to answer James's question about the benefit of the Gate-designated classroom, there are some benefits in the homogeneity of having an entire classroom of students who have been identified Gate and focused on a particular area. But we know that changes, right? With the different ways students are now identified. Because if they're identified in VAPA as their gift, if they're identified in, you know, another skill as their gift, that doesn't always hold true. So it just depends on how those students have been identified, and typically what you see in schools that are Gate-specific based on certain criteria, the homogeneity comes into play more than, often than not, as opposed to a cluster model where students are identified in various areas of giftedness. I hope that makes sense.
It does.
Okay.
Well, I know arts was mentioned. Is that something that we identify at every single school, or is it only specific schools where that specific talent is identified and cultivated?
So all of our students have the opportunity to turn in an arts portfolio, so from any site in our district. And then we review those portfolios. We have placement for those students where they have services at Golden Hill. So if they qualify, then that's where they would attend is Golden Hill, and that would become their homeschool. And they're also placed in a class with teachers and different, within the arts. So they're given more opportunities to show their learning through their art.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
You mentioned that in Northern California, this isn't so much of a thing. And I think that, at least I've heard, that sometimes it's about equity, and that there's a desire not to identify or single out kids in these ways. You also talked about similar demographics in looking at national versus local norms. Is there sort of a, can you explain that further? I'm wondering, is it an expectation that you would see in a typical population, 3% Gate-identified? And so we look at, what does that top 3% at this school community look like? Like, what does that process look like for local identification?
So when we're looking at local norms, so national norms, it's pretty straightforward. We're looking at the, you know, that highest, 10%, say. But when it comes to, at some of our sites, we didn't have very many students. We weren't identifying students. We were coming up with zero.
Yeah.
And so we knew we needed to look...
It's the test, not the kids.
Test is difficult. It will, I will say, as a parent, the test is not an easy test. Oh, sorry.
I will say, as a parent, the test is not an easy test. One of the tests at second grade that all students take nationally is the OSAT. I think what the test that we administer, Trish, is the, is a different one. Yeah. So there are different versions of it, but it's a nationally-based test, right? And so every student's taking this test typically at the same time around the country. But it is, it is a difficult test. So to use other metrics to be able to bring more kids into that spectrum allows us to say, okay, you don't fall into the 10% based on the national norm, but based on your S-BACK scores, your I-ready scores, or your teacher recommendation, we know that you qualify based on this particular criteria, or that the committee sits and says, this child is gifted. It may not be based on this test, but they certainly are. Multiple measures.
And in addition to that, we might see, and I'm just going to make up some numbers for the sake of...
Illustration.
Yes, illustration. So let's just say we have a student, we have a student at a particular site where there's no one in that 99th percentile, there's no one in the 95th percentile, but we've got four students at the 80th percentile. And then below that, the next students are at the 50th percentile. So I can look at that and say, those kids at the 80th percentile are doing something right. There's something, there's something more there. We want to dig deeper. So then we're going to look at their I-ready scores. We're going to pull the HOPE scale. We're going to look at a creativity piece, because there's something there that they're standing out from their peers. So the peers from the same setting, right? That's what local norms look at. Same setting, they've probably, you know, have similar demographics, we can guess. So what's different about those students where they're 30 percentage points higher than their peers? So that's what we're looking at, is that they stand out from the peers, the group.
It also helps to equalize the socioeconomic factor.
Yeah.
So students that despite maybe being raised in homes with parents that may, may or may not have a high school diploma, that may or may not be able to sit and have a conversation about the events of the day that are being raised, in some cases, on their own, and don't have access to tutors, that don't have access to Gate test prep, which is an industry, is cottage industry here in Orange County. And so part of the things that we want to look at is that we have students that are, despite socioeconomic, that doesn't provide the same opportunity, and yet are growing at exponential rates, much higher. That should be a consideration. And we have had students that have been in this country for two years, and even after two years have assimilated, acquired a language at a rate faster than everybody else, and being able to identify those patterns, that's a significant piece, and it is, it is an equity issue, and it's one of the reasons why we look at local, local measures.
And actually, rapid language acquisition is another one of the data points that we look at, because we know that that often represents giftedness.
I love to hear, I don't know a lot about the Gate program, so this has definitely been an educational presentation for me. I love to hear that you use different variables, because I know a lot of kids are not test-takers, and so that is fantastic. I'm actually really excited, once you form your committee and you do the research on other models, to see how you would redesign, I guess you could say, our current placements and labeling, and if we can definitely redesign the whole homeschool, Gate-designated sites and cluster sites, so that maybe we don't have the issues that we're having today, and we're able to place every student that needs to be placed in the right school. We're not throwing anybody out, because that's definitely not our goal, and that's definitely not what we want to do. But thank you for this education. I am all for it. Thank you.
James, do you have anything more?
Yes, I do. So I too am excited about this committee. I'm interested in particular, it sounds like we haven't examined these home sites in quite a while, so to reexamine that, but also to examine the modalities offered in the district. Doc Brown, your points well taken, that there very well might be a good reason for why we would want a Gate-only class. I'm about to see what is right for Fullerton there. But I do, I think, we've had several public commenters come to a few of our board meetings to bring up this issue as to what happened to their families, but we were unable to discuss it because it wasn't agendized. It's agendized now. We have a moment now, so I would like to take a moment to do this. Am I correct in saying that what is at issue here is, I think you mentioned it earlier, is that some families did not willingly chose not to attend their, quote, "home-designated Gate school"?
That's correct.
Okay. And were they told, as they did that, the risks of what that decision put into? In other words, if they had to get bumped, they would get bumped?
Yes, we go over that at our Gate, our welcome-to-Gate orientation, as far as their choices between staying at the Gate homeschool, at their homeschool, moving to the Gate-designated school, or choosing a school that's not their Gate-designated school.
Okay. And what happened to these families? Would you say it's an issue of state law or district policy?
District policy. Yeah, that's our policy, is that, well, it's state law that the homeschool residents would have priority, but as far as students who are not homeschool residents, that's the way that our program was set up, is that the students would feed to our particular Gate-designated school.
Does that mean that we could have not, in an alternate universe, designed any policy that was compliant with state law that would have prevented the outcomes that we have in this, in the public comment?
I think there's particular situations, and in addition to particular situations, again, there is interplay with state law that would apply to some of the families affected, not all. One of the interplays is that if somebody is a Gate student and they live within the boundary of a school, of that school, by law, they do have priority. And theoretically, somebody that is not in that boundary through a random draw potentially would be asked to leave. In this particular situation, nobody was asked to leave the school, so that law, in this particular case, doesn't apply to the folks that came forward.
Yeah. But I don't want to glide too quickly over thin ice here, so let's maybe make an example. So I live in the Sunset Lane District. I have a kid that gets into Gate. I want to send him to Laguna Road, despite Sunset Lane having a designated Gate school. A similar situation arises, and I'm told, hey, you can go back to Sunset Lane, but you can't stay here. So I want to be precise, because it sounds like state law requires the new student to be allowed to attend their neighborhood school, for lack of better terms, right? But there is no state law guaranteeing that they have to go to the Gate-only class. In other words... In other words, they could be allowed a spot at Laguna Road, but they could be allowed a spot in a Laguna Road cluster. Is that correct?
Correct. And that's what has typically happened.
Okay, so state law does not prevent relief to these families. It is a district policy that prevents relief to these families. Is that correct?
The policy, and while I was definitely not here when this was created, the, the piece, though, that, that I'm going to guess on why some of this policy existed was to prevent this situation from occurring, which is, if you had a policy that said that once a child was in, in a classroom, they were guaranteed to be in that same group of kids for all, let's say, whatever it is, four years, that that would potentially run against state law. And so, again, I was not here when they initially created some of, some of that thinking around that, but whatever policy that we eventually create and go through, we'll have to be mindful of this exception. And we could not actually say any child that was in a school that, let's say, was not from the boundary, if they joined in, let's say, in fourth grade, that they would be guaranteed a spot with that same group of kids all years. We couldn't actually legally guarantee that context. So we would have to.
Wouldn't you legally guarantee it if you had a cluster of one? So if you only had a GATE-designated class of 30 students and a 31st student moved into the area, in theory, you could keep that 30-student class together and create a new cluster of one? Or is there a minimum number before you create a GATE, GATE cluster?
I mean, potentially, you could add as many classes as there is space for at that school. And there definitely are schools where there's not additional space to add an additional classroom, but those are sorts of things, like some of those nuances, depending on which school, the policy, it would depend on the school in terms of being able to add an additional class.
So.
That is tricky. Okay. And so for the particular purposes of getting relief for these families, it sounded like one of the main reasons why we could not accommodate all of their requests is because of how close in time this decision, notification to these families, I came to give public comment, how close in time it coincided with open enrollment in the district. Is that a fair characterization? Like, in other words, we couldn't reverse some decisions without having several downstream effects in enrollment.
Right. I mean, we operated under a set of rules during the open enrollment process, and then based on that set of rules, applied those. We can change the rules for next year and communicate what those rules are. So absolutely, in the future, if this board wants to make that change, they can. What makes this unique is it would have negatively impacted families that did go through a process that we had communicated on the website about what that process is. And so, again, this isn't about preventing the future changes. It's about being consistent with the process that we had established through open enrollment.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Adding to what James was asking, so our policy, we don't have a policy that says once you start in a cohort, you're in that same cohort the whole time, right? I mean, our policy does, says we, we don't do that because if somebody does move in, then you have to.
Yeah, we couldn't guarantee that.
But if, if we, if we had, could, could you say there, I guess, okay, my question is.
You could prioritize. You could give priority based on, you know, let's say, in this case, state law. So you could say, as long as it's not in conflict with state law, you could apply this set of rules.
But could you, could you have a policy that keeps the kids together, and then anyone new coming in then goes into a cluster and still not, and still be within law?
Generally, that would be true, but I can think of some exceptions. So as an example, if you had a student move into a boundary area, and you had a student that was not from that boundary, and you had exceeded capacity at that school, the new child coming into the school that was GATE-identified could bump a student out of that school, and that would be, that would be based on state law.
But that, would that be, if, if that child is going to their designated GATE area, that would?
There's still a priority.
Based on state law?
Yeah.
Okay.
How do we protect other programs? Like, if I were to look at this and say, we have a DLA program, and you, you let the, I mean, so you enroll your DLA students? Is that, how is that different in keeping that DLA class together? Those, the DLA class never gets bumped.
Gen, this is a general rule, and it's definitely more so in the beginning, but in the beginning, we've selected schools that had declining enrollment, so there was room. And even in some cases, and Raymond is definitely a great example of this, we, we had several classrooms that were available. It wasn't just a matter of, we had empty classrooms. So as we've grown the program, we've been able to add classes. And so while that's true for Raymond, for some of the schools where enrollment, where it's, it's difficult, every year, we're filled in most cases to capacity at some schools.
So we do want to say, there's multiple things that we could look at. There's options of, as Trish mentioned, magnet schools or magnet centers where you have your own location code, and those kids belong to that location code, so they're not bumped out of that other location code. There's, there's so many different things that, that we can, as a committee, look at and explore in terms of the possibilities and putting them under different umbrellas, open enrollment versus intra-district versus inter-district. What does the state say about those things? And becoming a resident student? And so there's various avenues to explore, and, and as she mentioned, preceding her, and definitely myself, this is, it's definitely worth a conversation of, of how do we move forward and begin to modernize what is happening in the GATE world so that students aren't separated from the cohort that they came from, or there's this continuity of enrollment to be able to finish their journey? So I, I think there's a lot of work to be done in the fall.
Right. And I, you know, I guess what I'm looking at is, you know, the children that are in these positions, right? It's the kids that have been with the same group the whole time, and making sure that that they are, that we are, you know, looking at their needs because, you know, as, as you said, socially, emotionally, GATE students might come with different things that they're looking at, right? And so I think we should be mindful of what's best for our kids, but also understanding that we, we have this policy. And we've said this, and we've adhered to this policy, and, and it seems to come up, maybe not every year, but every other year, same school. So definitely looking at one school in particular, at, you know, what are those numbers now? I mean, and do they need to be tweaked? Because maybe a long time ago, they were different than they are now. So I think that this, I applaud the parents for coming and making sure that you don't give up on this because this is something that we look, are going to take under consideration and really make some, some, some changes so that we are looking at what can we do, what can we do about this so that our students and our families aren't in a position where you're having to disrupt them and disrupt what's going on? Because, you know, these are your kids, and, and, you know, other people might say something, but it's just, they're your kids, and you have to look out for them, and, and you know your kids. And so to speak up for them is, is highly commendable. So, thank you. Anybody else?
I just have two thoughts I wanted to share. Two things that I'm encouraged of is what I feel like I've learned tonight is the value of clusters. I mean, we could have two classes of 28 clusters and two extra kids who benefit from being in the cluster. So the idea that we have flexibility and switching around and the, our staff are being encouraged to develop these skills and develop professionally, and I think everybody benefits from it. So that's an encouragement to me, that it doesn't have to be the GATE class, the not-GATE class. It can be, everybody benefits from this approach, and I like that. And then the other is to hear the ways that we're looking at other ways of identifying talent and ability because we know that a lot of standardized tests do have bias. And I think, you know, I was thinking about, we, at the School Board Association meeting a couple of years ago, we had an amazing speaker, and he, he said, "Talent is equally distributed, but opportunity is not." And this idea that we can expect to find amazing, talented, gifted kids no matter where we go, it's just sometimes the barriers of what we expect to see keep us from seeing them. And so I think that I'm encouraged that we're finding new ways of doing that. I think that means we open up new possibilities in every single school to make sure every kid is being challenged the way they ought to be.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for this. And we look forward to this. There's, in the fall, it says it's starting in the fall, but I don't see a timeline.
We're also doing, August.
I know. So a guesstimate on when?
End of August, we want to give principals a time to, because they're going to be a part of this committee.
All right.
They're going to be a part of this committee. So probably the third, fourth week of August is where we'll kick off and start sending out invitations at the end of summer. Not end of summer, because that, summer lasts a very long time, I feel like. Probably in July. And we're going to start sending out our invitations to principals and letting them know this is the set of meetings that we would like them to attend.
And, and to work backwards from a date?
From?
So open enrollment is opening in January?
January.
So we need to work backwards so that we can publish those guidelines by the open enrollment period?
Definitely.
Do you have this?
By November.
The goal probably to be November will be a busy month.
Yes, definitely.
Oh, I feel bad for them. If I, if I allow a personal necessity break, do I have people's promise that they're going to be back here in five minutes?
Promise.
Because we have people that have been sitting in the back so patiently for their presentation.
A Rooney.
So five minutes, go.
Promise.
Go, go.
I don't know if I can promise five minutes. He didn't sing the National Anthem.
Five minutes, go. Okay, are we, are we back yet? I gave you six minutes. Sorry, Sergeant Bridges, I tried for five. Okay, do we not, we are still missing a seat. All right? Okay, I think we're, we're ready. Dr. Hammett?
Good evening, Board President Berryman, Superintendent Pletka, board members, cabinet audience, who remain, thank you for staying, our esteemed guests at the back of the room, who've got to enjoy a majority of our meeting tonight. We are really pleased to be able to present to you right now a school safety presentation specifically tailored to an update on our school liaison officer position. This will be a joint presentation between myself, Chad Hammett, Deputy Superintendent, and the esteemed Sergeant Bridges, who will do an incredible job in this presentation. You'll look forward to his part. So a couple of, a little bit of background on our school liaison officer. This is a partnership that began in the 2023-2024 school year. Over the course of this time, we have had three different school liaison officers assigned over the two-year partnership. And I don't want to steal any thunder from Sergeant Bridges, so I'll let him share a little more on that. Really, the focus has been on visibility and building relationships with our students, our community, and our staff. They provide response to police matters on school campuses, drugs, domestic abuse, weapons, child pornography, et cetera, and they're not involved in student issues that should be addressed by school staff. For example, you won't see the school liaison officer involved in student discipline or student behavior, or investigation of matters on school campuses that are addressed by school administration and not by a school, a school liaison officer. So what sort of training and resources has the school liaison officer brought to our district? It has helped us with our fire, earthquake, and intruder It has helped us with our fire, earthquake, and intruder drills that happen monthly. So the school liaison officer brings an added level of collaboration, an added level of collaboration and communication with our city partners, particularly with Fullerton Police, but also has brought more involvement with the Fullerton Fire Department. They're also very helpful as we look at our emergency preparedness. How do we do things in the event of emergency like parent reunification, when you have 700 parents who all want to pick up their students at the same time? Crisis communication and incident management. And the school liaison officer in the partnership with Fullerton Police has allowed us to increase and improve in each of these areas. We also provide additional training to our playground and noon duty staff using our liaison officer of how to react in different situations, what are the best practices if there are things going on in the community. And very often, our playground supervisors are the eyes and ears of what's happening on our campuses and we want to, we use our liaison officer to help train them. Annually, we make sure that they're helping us with things that normally most elementary districts don't have. For example, AEDs. Every single one of our campus has an AED on the campus for the normal school day and in our after-school program. We administer Narcan and have Narcan available for administration and CPR training. And our liaison officer is helpful in ensuring that all of those items happen as well. Just some additional things, not to go too far into the weeds, because I could go really far into the weeds on this, but I really just want to highlight some things that the SLO is involved in helping train our safety monitors that we have at each of our junior high schools, ensuring that they're trained and know how to respond in different situations. Also, all of our safety monitors have what we call the unarmed safety guard training with a guard card, which is the industry standard of what a safety monitor would have. And our SLO is helping ensure they have that and they're involved in that. We have first aid CPR certification and stop the bleed training that's provided to all of our staff that are those frontline playground supervisors, school safety monitors, et cetera, also that all of our, our SLO knows how to administer as well. We have nonviolent crisis intervention. You're saying, what is that? That is how you intervene when a student maybe is having a behavior issue and student may be physical, the student may be loping, ways that we intervene with students without being physical or without having to get involved in a way that may injure the student or somebody else. And then one of the great things with our, with our SLO is the amount of level of training they're helping with, what we call our higher level trainings, which are things like active intruder, shelter in place, run, hide, fight. We train all of our schools on a three-year cycle in this, and we train all of our new hires every single year. And our school liaison officer has been involved in those trainings, helping make sure that all of our staff know what to do in the events, event of an incident. So one of the things that's been very exciting this year is we have increased our level of emergency drills to the next level. So every year, our goal is how do we take things to the next level and involve more partners? This year, we ran our first ever community-wide drill that involved Fullerton Police, Fullerton Fire, the high school district, and the elementary school district. And we collaborated, we communicated, we shared what would you do if we had an incident that affected one of our schools here in Fullerton and we had to evacuate students to one of the schools in the high school district? And how do we coordinate police and fire services with all of those components? And it was a very successful drill. And again, this year, we're looking forward to upping that to another level and really looking at how do we ensure that we utilize all the resources in our community to ensure our students, our staff, and our community remain safe. We also, one of the great things that we've seen is just the increased sharing of information and how we provide access to our school liaison officer and Fullerton PD in the event of an emergency. So there's greater sharing of protocols, threats, law enforcement tips. We have primary contact documents and information that we provide to all of the officers and the sergeants that are out in the field. Our FPD and Fullerton Fire have access to keys to all of our facilities. So whether we're there or not, they can open doors, they can get in and get to whatever they may need to get to. And also, we have an MOU with FPD for camera footage. So if there's an incident happening on one of our campuses, they're able to access our footage and be able to get more information about what's happening and be able to not walk into a situation blind. For 2526, we are going to have a higher level of great shakeout drill for all of our sites and district-wide. And we also, as I mentioned earlier, will be doing a more extensive citywide drill that will involve all of our partners. And we're actually hoping to bring the city in as well, including their maintenance and operations force if we, if we needed sharing of equipment and materials to, to get through an emergency situation. All right, so in preparing for this presentation, I reached out to all of our principals and I provided them with an anonymous survey, meaning that I don't know who responded and they didn't know, I, they knew I wouldn't be able to read what they responded, which is a safe thing and can be a dangerous thing, right? Because sometimes you may get feedback that you don't want. I can tell you, I was blown away by the feedback, the level of positivity in the feedback in relationship to the school liaison officer partnership with FPD. And I won't read through all the comments, but just to highlight a few, on the general feedback on the SLO partnership, one of the principals said, I feel that this partnership is invaluable. Having someone from FPD who is familiar with our staff, admin, and school site means that when there is an emergency or when we have a situation that requires PD support, we just don't get a random officer who isn't familiar to school-related issues or child-specific issues. On the next slide, one of the benefits that principals have seen, students and families know that they can rely on the police to help them and use them as a resource to help keep everyone safe. The next one that was the, probably the scary, most risky question outside of just any, any other open information question was what are some of the challenges? And without exception, the principals responded that one of the greatest challenges is not having enough school liaison officer time. As we have one at school liaison officer and 20 sites and 12,000 children and 24,000 parents and guardians, there's a lot of folks that they're involved with. So one of the things that we heard all the way across is just the need and, and how, how the liaison officer is running multiple directions, doing multiple things. And then finally, any other information? And I, I found these responses to be the most interesting because folks can just say whatever they want about the, the school liaison officer. And I, this comment really stuck out to me that since the introduction of the school liaison officer position, I felt significantly more supported at our school sites. The presence of a consistent knowledgeable officer has made a meaningful difference in our day-to-day operations and overall sense of security. And I think that's a piece that's been, I've heard reiterated by our school administrators, our school staff, knowing that if there's a situation on a campus and they can call and an officer they know who knows their school, who they've talked to, can walk in that door, it just brings a sense of calm. And that's one of the great things that has really happened. And so now, without further ado, star of our show, Officer Bridges.
Good evening Superintendent Pletka, President Berryman, board members, cabinet, and those that hear in the audience and those that are still with us online. My name is Sergeant Bridges. I supervise our Community Services Bureau at the Fullerton Police Department, which encompasses our school resource officers as well as our school liaison officer. I've been a police officer here in the city of Fullerton for 26 years now, and a third of my career has been either working in schools, working at schools, or working with students. And I'm biased in saying this, but my position or position where you can work directly with schools and children and students is probably the most rewarding position in the police department. And thank you for Dr. Hammett for approaching myself and our police department to come together and put this presentation together. So a lot, a lot of times, we don't hear the good things that the officers, especially the school resource officer, the school liaison officer is involved with. But Dr. Hammett allowed us to put this presentation together. So I don't want to just come up here and say these things to you. We put this presentation together to illustrate the great things that the school liaison officer position is doing and hopefully will keep doing. So with that being said, these are the school liaison officers that have been in that position. So we first started off with Officer Amanda Morley. She was our first school liaison officer selected for the 2324 school year. And Officer Morley has left her department. She's now employed at a different police department. So therefore, Officer Alexa Alcobarra stepped in temporarily and filled in as the school liaison officer. And then she did that for a few months. And then we have Officer Ashley Soto, who was selected as the school liaison officer for the 2425 school year, and she currently is the school liaison officer. So Officer Amanda, Officer Alexa, and Officer Ashley, or as I affectionately refer to them as AAA. So AAA, if you think about AAA, right? What does AAA do?
I was wondering what that was. Yeah, it was AAA.
There you go. So for AAA, they, they help you out with your flat tire. If your battery goes dead, they come and jump your battery. You run out of gas, they come and give you gas. Okay? So they, they're there to help. You call, they come. So same thing with my school liaison officers, Officer Amanda, Officer Alexa, and Officer Ashley. They're there to help and they're there to assist the schools. So if they call, yes, they would come. But I would employ you that my AAA is better than your regular AAA because they're not only reactive, but they're also proactive. Okay? So not only will they just come when you call, but they're at the schools. They are walking the campuses. They are, they are integrating and communicating with the students. So therefore, so you don't necessarily always have it a situation where a young person, when the first time they interact with a police officer, it's a negative situation. Okay? Our school liaison officers are there and making those connections with the students. So something simple as this, right? It's a police sticker badge. Okay? These things are very powerful. Let me tell you, you think we have protests and riots right now? Try handing these out at break time or lunchtime and you will see a riot mentality, okay? And a mob mentality. Okay? But it's something as simple as that, that our officers and especially our school resource officers and school liaison officers utilize as a tool to break that ice, to break that barrier with the students when we're on campuses. So in 23, the 2324 school year, our school liaison officer handled 200, or either handled or was involved in 219 calls. And that's at the schools. And then a following year, the 2425 school year, that number went up to 250 calls. And now, this number is a little bit off. It should be a little bit higher due to the fact there are some days where the school liaison officer was either at training or was out sick and they were replaced by another officer. So those officers handled calls as well. So the numbers should be a little bit higher, but the 219 and the 250 that you see on the screen, those were handled by either Officer Morley, Officer, Officer Alcobarra, or Officer Soto. So, and when we look at those numbers, 219, 250, so with those numbers, let's examine if the school liaison officer was not there or the position was not available. Okay? The calls for service from the school, that's not going away. They're still going to need service and assistance, and assistance. So what would happen is the school would have to call our dispatch and request assistance. Now, my chief's probably not going to like me saying this, but when, when I first started here at the Fullerton Police Department, we were staffed with 160 officers. Okay? Now, our current staffing is 124. Okay? So we're doing more with less. Okay? So that, the 250 calls for service, if that call comes in, we will receive the call, but the call is going to get prioritized. Okay? And then an officer will respond, but who knows how long that response time might be for an officer actually to respond to that call. And then not only that, when the officer does respond, we're not sure of which officer is going to respond. Okay? Versus where we have a school liaison officer that's very familiar with the staff and the students and, and the campuses, and you get that familiarity with the officer, with the school liaison officer. The, so out of those 219 calls and 250 calls, I just wanted to highlight a couple of significant calls that were handled by the school liaison officer. So in this situation was an incident that was handled by Officer Morley. And in this situation, there was a student at a school and the student had eloped or ran off campus. Staff had followed the student and then called the police department for assistance. Student got about a quarter of a mile, half a mile away from the school. And at that time, a patrol officer was in the area and had confronted the student. Student was belligerent with the officers and staff and refused to go back to school. Now Officer Morley was working, but she was at a different school at the time. She heard the call, she left that school and then responded to this incident where they were. And the, because of the rapport and the relationship that Officer Morley had with this student, the student agreed to return back to the school. And mind you, I was out there too, and I could not get this student to come back to the school. She had nothing to do with me, myself, the other officers on scene, or the staff. Okay? She would only talk to Officer Morley. And she only agreed to go back to school if Officer Morley drove her back. She wouldn't go back with anybody else. So just the presence of Officer Morley being on that campus and the rapport that she had built with this student allowed her to get that student back to, back to campus. There was another incident, and this one was handled with Officer Soto. A couple of months ago, we had an incident where Valencia Park Elementary had a subject that was trespassing on their school grounds. And this is a subject who they've had numerous problems with and with problems with the gentleman trespassing on their campus during school, school times and outside of school time as well. So Officer Soto responded to the school and she actually contacted, the subject was still there by the time she arrived and contacted the subject while he was in the parking lot. And we, in the police department, will, will do records checks, right? So if we pull somebody over for a traffic violation, we can check their license to see if they're valid or if they're suspended. We could check to see if somebody has warrants. In this situation, Officer Soto ran a records check on this individual. And the, the record check came back that there was no wants or warrants for the subject. In addition, there was no restraining orders. So Officer Soto, from being in her position as the school liaison officer, she knew that something wasn't quite right with that. So from her relationships, working with the principal of the school and also working with a previous principal at that school, she was aware of this subject. And she was also aware that the school had filed a restraining order against this subject. However, when she was running, when you run the person on the computer, nothing showed up. So instead of just taking no for an answer, she continued to dig and do some more research to where she finally found the restraining order, it was just filed differently. to where she finally found the restraining order, it was just filed differently. That's why it wasn't pulling up when she ran the records check. But she actually did find the restraining order against this subject, which allowed her to remove him from the campus rather than letting the subject go to continue to disrupt the school activities of the school. But it was Officer Soto's position of being the school liaison officer and working with the school and remembering that, which in her mind, she didn't let it go until she actually found that restraining order. There's another one by Officer Soto. And Officer Soto was requested to do a welfare check on a student that had been missing a lot of days of school. Officer Soto went to, did a welfare check. So the student wasn't at school, so she responded to the student's house and did a welfare check with the student. During that contact, she discovered that the student was experiencing a mental health episode. So in talking with her, Officer Soto actually got her to agree to go down and seek some therapy and some assistance. And Officer Soto was very instrumental in convincing this student to do so. So the student went down, received some services, received some therapy, and was able to return to school a few days later. And since then, Officer Soto has had communication with the student at school, has talked to the student at school. And during those communications, Officer Soto has talked to the student. They have talked about goals for the student. And she periodically checks up on the student. And something that I wanted to point out, so on this slide right here, what you're looking at is an attendance record. And this is the attendance record of that student that I was just speaking of. So the Es that you see up there on the screen, those indicate excused absences. So what happened was the student was just calling in sick multiple times. And calling in sick, calling in sick. And that's when finally, one of the staff members had called Officer Soto to do the welfare check. So right around there at the end, I can't see it from here, I have my glasses on, but in that cluster right there, that's just right around the time that Officer Soto made contact with the student and the student went out and sought therapy. Okay? So fast forward with her attendance, because this is the next slide of her attendance. And I believe this is October through December. And then the attendance gets a little bit better. Still a little bit sporadic throughout, but definitely better than what it was. Okay? Let's fast forward a little bit further than that. And then now we're in December to February, and her attendance has drastically improved. Okay? And going on even further than that, for the remainder of the year, the student didn't miss one day of school. Okay? And that's from December till the end of the school year. And that's after the interaction that Officer Soto had with her where she convinced her to seek some therapy. So this started off as a welfare check to where the student got the assistance that they needed and drastically improved on their attendance and being at school. So with the school liaison officer position, we have informed the relationship with the school district. It's visibility, like Dr. Hammett said. So even if the school liaison officer isn't doing anything, just the mere fact of just walking through the campus at break time or lunchtime, where the students can see the officers, it's just that relationship that they have and that they build. And again, we're very fortunate that we have the school liaison officer position and that the school liaison officer has the time and the ability to do that. So these are some of the photos that I wanted to share with you. This is Officer Morley. I believe this is at Laguna Road School where she participated in Read to the Students Day at the school. This is Officer Morley again, and this is a Red Ribbon Week ceremony. So during Red Ribbon Week, we try to get to about 10 of the schools during the Red Ribbon Week. Yeah, it is. So we try to get to about 10 of the schools. So a couple of weeks ago, I had a phone call from one of the schools asking about Red Ribbon Week. And I was like, ma'am, you're kind of early. It's in October for Red Ribbon Week. And she goes, I know. She goes, I wanted to be the first because that's how bad I want you guys at my school. So we're already getting calls for Red Ribbon Week. I'm going to come back to this picture, but take note of it and we'll come back. This is Officer Soto. This was during a Team Kids seminar, so, or assembly, I should say. So we collaborate with Team Kids. And Team Kids, for those of you that are not familiar, Team Kids is an outside group where they come in and they do assemblies with students and they try to promote leadership and giving back to the community with the kids. And we, as well as the fire department, will collaborate with the Team Kids project. Again, Officer Soto, and this is her doing a career day at, I believe it's at Pack Drive Elementary. And she's out there, she has the car, and the kids love seeing the car, turning the lights on and whatnot, so they love seeing that. Again, some snapshots of Officer Morley, when she was there in the position, up there with Principal Lim. Now, and this one, it's another collage of photos, but I wanted to focus on the flyer, the kind of teal-greenish-blueish flyer. So I wanted to highlight this one as well. So when Officer Alcobarra was filling in as a school liaison, this was at the end of last year, oh, sorry, the end of the 23-24 year where she was filling in. And she was going up to La Dara Vista, and she was going up there a few times. They had a couple of issues at the time. It was the end of the school year. It was hot. State testing was coming along. So Officer Alcobarra, she reached out to the students and she made a deal with them. She said, hey, look, if you guys cannot have any major issues for the next couple of weeks, and then if you can also do well on your state testing, she goes, I will come up with a surprise and an event for you. So a couple of weeks go by, no major issues, the kids did well on the state testing. So she came up with this idea of cops, pops, and pups. Okay? So what she did is she harassed our chief and got him to agree to buy $300 worth of ice cream for the students. No tax money there, it was all donated money. And so we went out, we bought $300 worth of ice cream, brought that to the school, and then we just had a fun day with the students. So she got this awesome DJ to come in and do music for the kids. So I was the DJ. Thank you. And so we played games with the students. But we also did, what she also did is she got our facility dogs to come in. So that's the pups that came into play. So, but what I wanted to highlight here was we were, had the music going on, we were playing games with the kids, but she also made it a point to where she took the facility dogs and brought them into the special ed classes. So that way, those students who weren't out in the activities, they could participate too and play and pet the dogs, but also interact with the officers as well. So it's these things that the school liaison officer position is doing and engaging with the kids and the students. So earlier, I told you that I had a bias with the school liaison officer program and school resource officers in general. And I do. To share a story with you, just a couple of months ago, I was out of my office, I was working on patrol, and I had, we were dealing with the situation, and a couple doors down, there's a guy coming out, running towards us, and he's yelling at me, Frozone, Frozone, Frozone. For those of you that don't know, you get it now. So for those of you that don't know, that refers to the movie The Incredibles, and there's a character in The Incredibles that I've been told that I have a likeness to. So, can't see it. So, but when I was the school resource officer at Sunny Hills, that's what the kids used to call me. That was my nickname. In fact, a lot of them, I would probably guess that probably most of the kids don't know that my name was Officer Bridges at the time. They called me Officer Frozone. So here's a grown man running down the street, he recognized me and said, Frozone, Frozone. But he felt able to do so because of the relationship that me and him had when I was at Sunny Hills. So for our school liaison officer position, for Officer Morley, Officer Alcobarra, and Officer Soto now, and for the school liaison officers behind them, I hope that they can build the relationships that I built when I was a school resource officer and bridge that gap between our police department and our students. So, and that concludes my presentation. So, thank you.
All right. Just a few other things on security to wrap up our presentation. We will be making various facility improvements that will increase security and safety throughout the next few years through our measure N, bond measures, so we're very excited about that. You'll see over this year and through the summer especially, continued training of our safety monitors and playground supervisors as we have ongoing training planned for them prior to the start of the school year with SLO collaboration. As I mentioned earlier, upping the level, the next tier for our Great Shakeout and community-wide, citywide community partner emergency drill. We have a workplace violence plan that we adopted last year, and that really an essential component of that is our involvement with our school liaison officer and the Fullerton Police Department as part of that plan. And then we will continue to standardize the tools and the training that we use for shelter-in-place, active intruder, and lockdowns to make sure that every classroom has a brand-new emergency backpack that allows them to have supplies in case of a lockdown. And that additionally, there's plenty of supplies for evacuations and shelter-in-place if we need those. And then just some of the technology that we're continuing to use that interacts with our school liaison officer, our Say Something anonymous reporting system. We get tips at all hours of the day and night, and myself and Mari Montgomery are working closely with the Fullerton Police Department to ensure dispatch is able to get out to students and that we're able to get the information they need to follow up on any tips and perform wellness checks. And then we are also looking at upgrading our Raptor Visitor Management System to use a new version that is faster and has mobile capabilities so that we can check in parents at different gates with new wireless, airless printers. And if you don't know, anytime there's a data match through Raptor, there's an immediate contact made to district personnel and Fullerton Police Department, which means our SLO is immediately dispatched out to that site to provide support and assistance in case there's a data match. All right.
Okay. I'm going to start with James, just to make sure we catch him over there. James, you have any questions or comments about the presentation?
Yeah, I think I'll hold the questions until the discussion ends.
Okay, okay.
Because we are going to be discussing the contract later, so.
So this is just about the actual?
Presentation.
Presentation, about anything that has gone over? No? Well, we so appreciate you, both of you guys, working on this presentation and for all the hard work and staying here and listening to everything else and learning all about gate and local indicators and everything else, so we appreciate that. If there are no questions, then we're good. I believe that was the end of our presentations for the evening. So now we will go to our consent agenda. And it has been revised, right? We had a item Z was a revision to the contract for Nava Consulting. I think everyone has had a chance, if you have a chance. Does anyone want to poll any items or discuss any items? Or do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
I have two things I wanted to discuss. One is to make a comment, and then the other, I don't think I want to poll the Nava Consulting agenda now that we've had a chance to revise it, but I did want to use it as a launching point to have a discussion with our board if possible.
Okay, all right. So why don't we, do we want to make a motion to at least get the consent agenda out and then have a discussion about them?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been approved, or motion to approve it, and the second, and we do have some comments. So start with your first comment, Ruthie.
Yeah, my first comment is on item GG, which is the approval of the extension of the contract with Camino Immigration. I just, again, I'd love to be up at board and make sure that there's no room for any accusations or impropriety in any way. But as we, as I mentioned in February, you know, with the original contract, Bethany Anderson, the lead of Camino Immigration, is a close personal friend of mine. I contribute financially as a donor to the organization because I believe in it so much. Obviously, there's no financial or ethical reason why I cannot vote for this consent item. I just want to make that very clear. But I believe that, in fact, my years of knowing both Bethany and the organization makes me all the more confident to approve the contract and enthusiastically recommend it because it offers this important free service to our families.
I too need to say that I too financially support Camino Immigrations, and I have donated to their fund because I think they're doing amazing work, but I don't receive any financial gain from it.
Just a shout out to the community as well. So we're, I want to thank Jenny and for her work. We'll be providing legal services, or at least legal advice to families that are immigrants that might have questions about immigration law. And so that will be available on a weekly basis. Let's do the plug now, Jenny. What day and time?
Thursdays, from 9:00 to 11:00.
Thursdays from 9:00 to 11:00. And they, these services are at the community center at Nicholas?
Yes.
And can they walk in, or do they need to make an appointment?
Either.
Okay. So they could just walk in. Obviously, if there's someone already there, they'll have to wait. And then if they want to call in advance, they could, and that's a way to also ensure that they get that time slot when it's available for them. So this is a service that'll be offered all summer, all summer long, and we encourage families that do have questions to take and make this, this is made available to them.
Thank you. And they can also refer to, I like that we're offering consultation, but the services could be experienced at other organizations too. They're not limiting to their work, but saying these are the resources that are available to help you if you have a case or an opportunity for adjustment. This is how we advise you to move that forward.
All right. Ruthie, do you want to keep Z in? You don't want to pull it, you just want to talk about it?
I do want to. I do want to talk about it. I'm prepared to vote in favor of it and approve it, but I do have some issues that it's brought up for me to have a discussion. So I can start that now.
Yeah.
Or if anybody else has any other small comments they want to discuss first.
James, do you have anything about the consent calendar?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So we have this proposal for continuing extending the contract with Danielle Nava Consulting, who's been doing a lot of work for our organization over the last three, four years, I think since 2021, and around the area of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And, you know, I got involved in my journey to being a part of this board and becoming a trustee eventually, in many ways because of this. After the murder of George Floyd, and there was a lot of conversation at our school board and a resolution around Black Lives Matter and DEI, I joined a parent community task force, and I wanted to be a part of that conversation, and Danielle Nava was leading that. So... So, that was, so it's with that both affirming positive critical approach that I bring this topic up because I think it's so important that I don't want to move quickly beyond this contract, but really to think about what opportunities it brings us. So, I'm glad to see, I think we had some back and forth emails today because, and yesterday because I thought that the contract was somewhat loose. It wasn't concrete or the objectives and outcomes of the expectations for the contract were pretty loose, which is not always what we want to see in a contract. But I think that a lot of that's been shored up and a lot of it's been clarified is I've, you know, we've asked questions about what exactly does this mean and what does that look like and making sure our language is the same as her language. So, when we refer to a task force, which task force are we talking about and who's going to do what? So, I feel more confident with this proposal going forward, the proposed work that she's going to be doing. But I guess to me what it raised, and this is why I want to bring it to our board, to our trustees, is it, it raised this question about, this is, her work is a small piece of the investment that I believe that we, I know we're doing as a district, right? And right now especially, I think this moment, there's a lot of pushback at a national level. We want to be thoughtful and strategic about the way that we do this work and our commitment, our, I believe, our boards and districts bedrock belief, the diversity, equity, and inclusion and belonging make us better and that culturally responsive teaching is essential to good teaching and positive outcomes for students and just development of kids in our society, right? And so, I was thinking about how this is a piece of it, but I would like to see our district have more clarity and focus around a district-wide diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging vision and plan. I think that we want, my feeling is I would like to see more concrete deliverables and expectations so that we kind of know where we're going. And I think that some of that was clarified in revising this contract, but that's just a piece of it, of all that we're doing. And I think about, you know, some of the, we also had this chance as a board this last week to review a progress report on how we're doing in this kind of larger picture since especially 2021 around diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And some of the recommendations for that report was that going forward to look at a dedicated TOSA or staff time dedicated to this position and for greater integration and accountability in this work. And so, I agree with that conclusion. I think that we need to both acknowledge that there's so much good stuff. I mean, we saw this report and the progress made in the last few years. There's so much that's happening on so many different levels. And Dr. Brown and Orlando Soltero Reese are leading a lot of that as well as our HR and recruitment. We're looking at two policies today around recruitment and equity that both reflect our values but also our priorities moving forward. And so, I think that what it left me, this conversation that we kind of were building up to really left me with wondering, how do we streamline and bring these all together for more synergy and have clarity about where we're going and the expectations and transparency about accountability in that process? I think what we're doing with our DLA work, what we're doing with special education, what we're doing with supporting immigrant families, all of this is work that's happening. And there's so much synergy. It's just that oftentimes it happens in different pieces. And at least as a leader, we don't always see the connections or the process of how they build on one another. And so, what I'm, what this kind of brought up to me is a desire to have more of a district-wide vision and plan for achievement that brings all of these elements together. And I realized that, you know, I called Bev and say, how do we do this? You know, brainstorming. I think that there are, you know, and I think about even the flow of what we do as policymakers at the, at the board, and that translates to both strategic direction for staff as well as LCAP goals, you know, schools' goals, all of that comes out of it. So, I think that there are two options for us as a board, which are either primarily to draw attention to this through looking at and revising our board goals and considering drawing more attention because they're absolutely in our board goals. Are we concerned?
We have the police with us today. I feel very safe right now.
Yeah. They're not running.
We're okay. Okay, we're good. Anyway, my, I think throughout our board goals, we have this integrated. But the question would be, does, is the best strategy for us as leaders of this district to say, the review our board goals and possibly bring more attention and focus on this? Or is it something more like when we review our superintendent's objectives for the year, Dr. Bob's performance review in September, that we bring, again, this expectation that this be one of the measurable outcomes for him in this year, which then obviously would be implemented with the support of all the staff? So, I think those are the two sort of avenues that we have to bring more attention to it. And I wanted to bring this to our trustees to ask, do, what do you think about that plan?
I personally would say that right now we are looking at the contract as that is. And then listening to what you're saying is, I think the appropriate place is to talk about it when we talk about our goals. Because we will be reviewing our current goals and deciding if, in fact, we want to tweak them or move them or do them. So, again, it's, you know, what are we looking at for the future?
Yeah.
Which then is incorporated into our goals. And if we want as collective body revise our goals and add a goal specifically for this, then we do that at that time. I think that this is, you know, this right now is this contract. And then taking into consideration everything you said because it's right on. I mean, yes, definitely, as we're talking about our goals, which would be coming in, if I'm not mistaken, I think we talked about August. August, we would talk, we have a protocol meeting. I thought at the protocol meeting, we would talk about our next steps for our goals. If, in fact, as a group, we felt like we really needed to spend more time with it, scheduling a board goal workshop like we've done in the past. Because I think what we're trying to do is look for the future. The superintendent's evaluation is based on what has happened in the past. And I think that looking forward, if we want to change it and tweak it as a collective body, then we do that. Because that's the time, I think, to do it. And we will have that opportunity. That would be my, my suggestion.
I personally think diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging is one of the subjects that we really need to focus as well on. And I agree. We, I think we need to bring it up another time, not, but thank you for bringing it up because it is something that we do need to focus on. I think bringing it up is an issue right now that we're talking about, about the contract is actually perfect timing because it is an issue that we do have to deal with, especially with everything happening right now. It's important that all of our children, whether we're talking about immigration, LGBTQ, every child feels included. And I think that's important. So, that's definitely that, something that I would like to also bring up as a subject that we should talk about in the near future.
I mean, I think, I think it's very relevant when we talk about our board goals.
And just a piece, you know, I know when people think of diversity, equity, inclusion, there's a lot of things that fall in, within that scope. I would put the work that we're doing with immigration as maybe one of the top equity and inclusion issues that we're facing right now. And so, while Danielle for sure has helped us in other areas, that's not been a major focus. And yet, it's been a major focus of this district. And we've used a, of various resources to help us in this area. So, just to say Danielle and her work helps us with some pieces of diversity, equity, inclusion. But I would say that the work that we're doing is well above, well above it. And in fact, just to allude to our further, our previous conversation, the work we've done around GATE, that's equity work. And we've dug really hard into that. So, I, Danielle does a piece, but there's a lot of other good work that's happening that's outside.
I think a lot of what we did today literally is part of this. But again, yes, this is something that I would definitely like to talk about. I know, we know the issues that we've been talking about for the last few weeks are on our top of the radar, which are very important. And I feel like every issue that we've been talking about today is extremely important. But I don't think we need to talk about this today. Now, I, as we're talking about the amended contract, I noticed that we, from the first to the second, the piece where you're adding the as determined appropriate by the chief academic officer and assistant superintendent was taken out. I really truly do like the fact that we have some accountability from staff in, related in here, and that wasn't in here anymore. So, that was taken out. So, I don't know if we want, can we add something back in to the effect that you made number eight, co-develop up to two parent family workshops, which can include but are not limited to LGBTQ plus IA support and resources for family and continued support on issues of immigration for families. But we're not adding anything as determined by, I mean, because you're making it more specific, but those might not be the only issues. So, I do like the fact that it is broad, having some, you know, which can include but not limited to says that. But I think keeping in as determined by or as appropriate by whoever that is needs to be added in. So, we'll add that verbiage back.
I think procedurally, we can move on from this.
I was just gonna.
And I, and I will bring it up when we come to the final future board discussions. And just remember to put a note that we will bring this back when we have our board goals conversation.
Okay, all right. So, so procedurally, we're making a little tweak to a consent item. So, do I poll that consent item? And let's vote on it separately. So, let's vote on, can I ask you to amend your motion to vote on the consent agenda with item Z, the revision of item Z out? And then we could vote on those and then go back to Z, and then we can vote it with the amendment, to the amendment.
I move to approve the consent agenda except for item Z.
Second. Okay, and it's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda, the consent agenda without item Z. Any other question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, going back to Z. So, Z, we are looking for a motion to approve the amendment to the, yeah, yeah, as amended. As additionally amended.
Not just revised, but as additionally amended because you wanted something else.
We've already, we, we've already approved the revision to come into the, to come into the body. So, all is we're doing is approving the amendment.
So, moved?
Second. Yeah, what we said. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, all right. All those years of being a parliamentarian for PTA. Okay, all right. Where are we, people? I've lost. Okay, we have, oh my gosh, we now have some discussion and action items. But didn't that, wasn't that what we were doing already? Okay. Our LCAP.
Good evening. So, last week you were presented with our LCAP goals. You received our LCAP report. You received the documents last week. We did the public hearing. Today, you received the local indicators that submitted, that will be submitted along with the approved plan to OCDE. So, today, we're just coming to get your approval of the plan as presented and submitted to you at the board.
And were there any changes from as it was presented till how it is now?
The only change that was made was the wording from the officer, the SLO to the SRO.
From SRO.
Sorry, the SRO.
Yeah.
Hello.
Okay, all right. All right, do we have a motion to adopt the proposed local control accountability plan, LCAP for 2025, 2026?
A motion to approve the LCAP.
Second. It's been moved and that we approve the local control accountability plan for 2025 to 2026. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you. And Dr. Coquelin? We've got a resolution.
Okay, this next resolution is for the board to adopt the EPA, the Education Protection Account, which is an offshoot of Proposition 30, which passed in 2012. This is money that we receive from the state. And so, it's a routine item that we bring every year, but the board needs to take action.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 24/25-20 regarding the Education Protection Account?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the Resolution 24/25-20 regarding the Education Protection Account. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, you. Temporary more money, okay?
And I believe the next one is C, if we can bring that.
Yes, item C. Temporary interfund transfers.
Correct. And again, another routine item which allows us to, needed, because the money that we receive from the state and the governments does not all come in at one time. Sometimes we have to borrow from other funds. So, this is a mechanism that allows us to do temporary borrowing from other funds.
Especially if the budget.
If deferrals or.
Deferrals happen, right.
And even sometimes if not with deferrals. There are certain times where property tax money comes in, so.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2425-21 to establish temporary interfund transfers of special or restricted fund monies?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any, any questions or concerns? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Look at us. Oh, you're still up there.
They're up there.
Going.
E is to adopt the proposed 2025, 2026 budget as was presented last week. And we will not be doing another presentation. There have not been, were no changes to the budget that we made. And while they're moving forward or they're moving in a direction, we still don't have a final approved budget. That will probably come before June 30th. And then there's trailer bills and things that follow. So, we'll come back in July and, and for sure in August and let you know any significant changes.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to adopt the proposed 2025, 26 budget for all funds?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And you have any questions?
I listened to the discussion from last week, so I caught up with y'all.
Thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate it. We'll be waiting to hear what happens over the next month. So, any other questions or concerns, comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Resolu, okay, signing people, people signing things.
Right, because we have some new positions. We have Eddie Carver Hall, who's now Director of Maintenance Operations. We need to meet him, so he. We have.
Wake up, Eddie.
Our new classified personnel director. We need to get her signature on there. So, anytime people come and go, we bring this resolution forward to get the signatures.
I move to approve this.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution or adopt Resolution 24-25-22, authorizing designated district personnel to sign various documents by signature to be kept on file by the Orange County of Schools for Fullerton School District, 22-40 and 48. Any comments? Congratulations, people. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. We're moving along. Board policies that have come? Dr. Hammitt?
Yes, so item F is approve revised board policy 4111, 4211, and 4311. It's a joint board policy with three numbers on it. We brought that back just, just a mere week ago for the board for first reads. Since that time, there have been no changes or edits to the first read, and we're bringing it now to the board for approval.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve revised board policy 4111, 4211, and 4311? Recruitment and selection.
I motion to accept the policy.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the revised board policy. Any comments? Great job, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, seeing none. Keep going, one more.
All right, next board policy is revised board policy 61, 6164 point four, identification and evaluation of individuals for special education. On this board policy, we brought that for a first read a mere seven days ago. And there was one change made from the first read to the second read where we had gotten a little crazy with our strike throughs and we struck out an extra word that we should not have. That is now correctly reflected in this copy of the policy that you'll be considering tonight.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the revised board policy 6164 dash four?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, comments? Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve revised board policy 6164 dash, or point four, identification and evaluation of individuals for special education. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you with all of your new board, or revised board policies. Right, now we've got the renewal of the contract between FSD and the Police Department for the school liaison officer.
Yes, so we provided you tonight with the invitation and we have a contract for the renewal of the school liaison officer for the upcoming 2025, 2026 school year. And that's this item.
Okay, I believe we might have some discussion on this, so I don't know how we want to, I think, I'll start with just, James, do you have anything to comment on about this item?
So I'd like to vote for this item. Hello? Hello?
I'm sorry, I guess I should ask for a motion first before we talk about it. Isn't this a, this is a renewal. It's an item for discussion and voting, right?
Correct, it is.
So we should have a motion before we talk about.
Correct.
Right, so, so I need a motion. Or is there a motion? To approve the renewal of the contract between FSD and the Fullerton Police Department for the school liaison officer for 2025, 2026 school year? So we need to have a motion to.
I'll move it.
Okay, it's been moved. Is it a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to bring it onto the table. Now we can have discussion.
So if I may.
Yes, yes.
So I, you know, I moved this item, but I do have concerns with what policies we have or don't have in place at the district level to ensure parental notification when we have law enforcement officials involved interacting with our children. One area in particular is when children are transported offsite. I know other board members have similar concerns and so I'm eager to hear what their ideas are, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, thank you. Who wants to go next?
I really appreciated the, the presentation today. Our police are such an important part of our society and they have so much power and they can wield the power in a way that could be helpful. And I think what I'm, I'm learning now is that our district needs to be better at understanding our role in the power that we are asking the police to wield when it comes to our students and, and our school sites. And so I do welcome the opportunity to continue this contract and I think that we have more learning to do. And so I'm really hopeful that based on our recent experiences, we'll take really positive steps to make sure that all of our staff is always cognizant of the positions that we're placing our children in potentially. And so I'm, I'm very grateful for this partnership and I just want it to work as best as it can all the time.
Yeah, as we talked about it earlier, one of my biggest issues is accountability, whether it's from the Police Department and our SLO or our administrators, our staff, and the policies that we put in place as to when, and the training, of course, as to when, that it's very specific as to who is responsible for the phone calls that are being made and take accountability for the actions that are taken and therefore not taken at the moment that we call the Police Department or our SLOs and that we make it clear on our, maybe our contract or our, on our end, we make it clear that accountability is very important and who is responsible for what in that moment. Because our main priority is taking care of our children. And we have to take into considerations the recent situations that we've heard of. I'm not going to get into specifics, but it's just, to me, accountability and taking responsibility is very important and that is what we need to have in writing so that this doesn't happen again.
Ruthie?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we're all feeling this sense of, so much of our relationship with our SLO, it depends on trust and transparency, right? And I'm grateful for the folks like Sergeant Bridges that have, we've known for a long time and have built those, those relationships, that trust, because we see that that makes a difference, right? I, it was really helpful to hear the input from the principals, the anonymous survey, to hear that they overwhelmingly support this position and find the SLO extremely helpful. The reason we brought on this position, and I was skeptical, was there were a lot of incidents where staff felt unsafe because of what was happening in the community and the impact it had on our schools. And so I think that this has helped to answer that question, like answer that concern, to say they have somebody they trust, they call, they know they're going to show up and they know who they're going to get. And that, that brings a lot of security and it makes sense that you want somebody you know and you trust, not whoever's answering the phone and may not know our kids or may not have that same, just capacity to enter into that situation in the same way. We learned that our SLO helped facilitate and implement the focus program, which is a program that we really care about that alerts when a child has had an incidence of trauma, whether that's an arrest in the home or someone was taken to the hospital in the middle of the night, that where the, Fullerton is the number one user of that program in all of Orange County because I think, because of that partnership that we have, the trust, right, that helps set that up. But we know that if things go wrong, there's dire consequences. And we know, I, I think we've done every, as much as we possibly can to set up a structure that has every best intention. And it's really about maintaining that, having trust and following those expectations that, that's, that's where the rubber meets the road here. Our police, we've just said very clearly should not be policing our students on campus or getting involved in discipline issues or behavior issues unless a specific law has been broken, like bringing weapons or guns or drugs to school. But instead, you know, they're there to keep our kids and our staff safe. And I think that the majority, like we've seen the benefits of that over the last few years. I think our contract lays out very clearly our expectations. So I am prepared to sign this contract with a couple of, a couple of additions, amendments. And one that specifically speaks to the issue of transporting students is that I think if we add a clause at the end that says if Fullerton Police Department determines that it is necessary to transport a student, whether that's because of a mental health issue or even an arrest, that this, there, that the Fullerton Police Department will not leave the school site until there is a clarity on the plan for Fullerton School District Administration to notify parents and guardians as soon as appropriate. And that plan might be, we need to wait to make sure everything's, everyone's safe or the plan might be call right now, but we need to have a plan in place and that's on us as Fullerton School District to then put that plan into place, right? And that's what we can control and that's what we, our expectations for our staff. Because I was, yeah, there are kids to protect and keep safe and care for, there are babies until parents step in, right? And so we need to act in their best interest until that moment and that's on us.
Just so that I captured that addition, if the Fullerton Police Department determines that a student needs to be transported, FPD will not leave the school site until a plan has been created or the, created by the Fullerton School District Administration to contract, to contact parents slash guardians as soon as appropriate.
I think that works. Yep.
And I will make sure that is added to the appendix A.
I originally was also thinking at the very beginning with the expectations of the position and the contract, I would like to make it abundantly clear, so I added a sentence, "The school liaison officer is intended to keep Fullerton School District campuses safe from outside threats to safety and security, not police students or supplement school disciplinary actions." I think that captures.
And where is that?
Our intention. I would add that at the very beginning where it says expectations for the position. To me, that captures our intent and then guides the conversation about what they do and don't do and when and where. The SLO is intended to keep Fullerton School District campuses safe from outside threats to safety and security, not police students or supplement school disciplinary actions.
Right. And put that wherever, I mean, even though it is included with our SLO and not do these things.
Yeah.
I think putting something at the beginning of that sets a tone.
May you, could you read that one more time?
Yeah, yeah. The SLO, because I think by then we've done the abbreviations, SLO is intended to keep Fullerton School District or FSD campuses safe from outside threats to safety and security, comma, not police students or supplement school disciplinary actions.
Saratha, everybody okay with that? James, are you okay with that comment?
Yes.
So two, so we're adding that and then we're adding that, that other piece? So those are two amendments to the existing MOU? Is this an MOU? Yes. The MOU, the contract. Any other changes to the contract that anyone has? Any comments?
Does, does James need to amend his, or to amend the motion to reflect the amended thing?
I have one more thing I want.
Okay, I'm not done yet.
So one of the other things we discussed is in the introduction of this MOU, we, it was discussed that the school liaison officer also assists with implementation of many programs, right, that actually are not mentioned in our MOU. So I, taking some of the language that was in our board agenda, but not necessarily in the MOU, I would add something like the SLO will assist in the implementation and act as a liaison between Fullerton Police Department and FSD to support such programs as the OCDE focus program, as well as educate students on safety issues affecting the community. Because I think there is a lot of time spent with the fentanyl conversations and the red ribbon week where the officer is asked to do education in our schools that's not captured in this MOU. And again, I think about what happens when we're gone. These are the expectations we have of how they.
Assist school, assist schools when visitors and adults are.
So you would recommend add then after the, such as the focus program, that part of the, that statement, adding the phrase.
I don't.
As educate students on safety issues affecting the community.
That's my suggestion. I don't think the focus program is currently in the MOU.
But I don't think it, I, I thought they were saying that the SLO is not the person.
They're, they're not the one who implements it. No, they were, they're not the one who executes the program and carries it out on a daily basis. That's actually done by the command staff.
Right.
Then sent to schools, so.
So they don't do anything with focus anymore, once it was implemented?
Correct. So how?
But they did help set it up.
But they're not doing anything anymore.
Yeah.
I, I think though you're suggesting as an example, right? You know, programs such as, and we can put in some of those things. I think that's your point, right, Ruthie?
Absolutely.
Is we're just saying, hey, there are some programs that participate, the fentanyl, red ribbon, the pups, pops, what is it, pops and something? Whatever it is. I mean, those are the sorts of things, so I think we could, they could be served as illustrative examples.
Assemblies, school safety.
I mean, it does say that they attend school fairs, PTA events, things like that, but that presence is different than helping plan and.
Yeah.
Implementing education.
Then you just want the words implementing and.
Program.
Helping. Program. These events, rather than educational programs.
Maybe you can add it to, the SLO will support all 20 school district, schools by and then add it as a bullet in there.
Just make it another bullet under the SLO.
Yeah.
For all 20 by.
Yes.
Yeah.
Would be, would something as simple as educating students on safety issues affecting the community?
Yep.
As a bullet be sufficient? Or would you like to see more?
I think so.
I think that's good because in here it does say that they will attend and the special defense.
Yeah.
Every school site. Maybe you could say attend and part, attend and. What's the word I'm looking for?
Participate.
Participate, participate.
Engage.
Participate. As opposed to just attending. Okay. I do like the fact that we have the SLO will not be involved whenever there's an incident that should be addressed by school staff or administration and we list those items. School fights, school discipline, investigations into student incidents, student behavior, immigration.
That was really important to us when we drafted this two years ago, to make sure that was clear.
I, and I also do think that, you know, as we, as we talk about this, we have an MOU or a contract with Fullerton Police Department and they have their set of guidelines and, and rules. And we should have our own district policies on things that should happen whenever there's an incident. And it needs to be something that's in writing and there's, it needs to be something that is communicated and collaborated on along with the Police Department so that they know our rules, roles and we know their roles and now we have a little check and balance.
And we could bring back a policy. We have protocols and we have training, but this board, you could solidify those protocols into a policy and we can bring that back and then you could add things or discuss. So I think that's something we could bring back potentially, not August, probably.
Yeah.
I think it's important that we added that in there because like I just said, accountability is important and it's important that they keep our staff accountable of what's next and what you, what our responsibility is and what theirs is. And we make sure that that policy is clear.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Dr. Chad, could you clarify? I, I asked the question through email. I'm not sure if everybody got to benefit from the response. Where, this contract is up to the amount of $113,000, but could you clarify how much is actually typically spent in the year?
Yes, the amount is up to 113,000, which would allow for any additional time or. which would allow for any additional time or issue in case there was a major incident and we needed overtime or extra time. However, the invoicing for the last two years, I can give you the exact amount on that.
The first year was more than the second year, right?
So for the invoice from the city for the 23-24 year was $85,048. And for the 24-25 year, $86,619. So the amount, though, listed for up to 113 has been right around $85,000.
I think the first year, we paid an additional fee to outfit the vehicle.
They had to do the...
The vehicle and the...
Yeah, but it was a one-time investment.
Okay. Okay, so James, are you there?
Yeah, I'll accept all that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Great, so it has been... There's been a motion to approve the amended renewal of the contract.
Second.
Okay, okay. So it's moved and seconded. Any other discussion other than we're thankful for the relationship that we have and glad that our principals are feeling like this is a good program? And we're happy that you guys... That we can make these amendments and be able to address issues that we've had. Anybody else? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Chad, you're still up there? You've got a...
I haven't left yet. I have one more item, which is an administrative report. It is the first read, and this says revision. However, I do want to correct that this is not revision. It's actually a new board policy. Board Policy 0415 on Equity. We encourage the board members to review this board policy. Fortunately, we do have a little time between this board meeting and the next, much more than a week. So it'll give you time to review and make any suggested changes or edits, and then allow us to run those through legal counsel to ensure that we are following the law and the education code.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now I'm at the point of future item. Oh, no.
Are we having a discussion?
No, because it's a first read. Aren't we just having a first read?
First read, and you can provide feedback if you want, and then we can... I can get that out to the board.
Can you do it just... Could you get it to him and see he could send it to us? Because I... I know I haven't read it, and I'm not ready to even think about what you have to say.
Yeah, I mean, I can absolutely send track changes of suggestions. I'll just say generally, I mean, I think it's great. It's a great start. There's two pieces. I think that, one, it's very aspirational. It's like, we're going to eliminate bias by doing these great things. And I think it's... That should be our goal. But I think the language is a little bit presumptuous to say, we're going to do this and change everything. And I think couching it in a little bit more of like the work we're doing in order to move in this direction would add fidelity to this policy. And then the second is, it's very much focused on ethnic and cultural diversity. And I personally believe that if we're talking about equity, gender equity is important, sexual orientation, disability. I think it's not broad enough for all the things that we want to cover. So I... My... Most of my edits are around expanding what we... When we think about eliminating bias towards equity, it's more than just ethnic and cultural diversity.
Do you think you could get her suggestions and then send the suggestions out along with... To all of us now?
Yes.
So that we can look at that and then go from that? I don't want to reinvent wheels because it sounds like we're probably all going to be thinking the same thing. So instead of five people writing what we think?
Yeah.
It's nice to have a start as opposed to... Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
You know, I like this kind of stuff.
We're going to let you just do... Like it. Future items. I know that in the scope of our conversation this evening, someone brought up the... I think it was Dr. Bob brought up the fact that we could have someone look at a board policy on addressing student incidents when it comes to...
Police involvement, communication. The expectation that we communicate with parents, and we make every effort. And when we aren't able to reach them, that we have a plan to then follow up with that communication, so...
Is that something this board would like to have at a future board meeting? Or be able to...
Is that a new policy or just an addition to, like, emergency or...
We could find... We could see what we...
It feels like an addendum.
You'll come up with something to present to us, maybe start with a communique, and then maybe if it needs to be approved, then... Okay? And then Ruthie, you had some comments about when it came to DEI and our board goals.
Yep, and just reviewing and providing more focus and clarity around expectations of a vision and a plan for achieving progress towards diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging in our district.
So would you say that goes in conjunction with our board goal conversation? Or is this something different that you want to do?
I mean, it doesn't get any higher than board goals. So I think if we... I absolutely believe it's already in our board goals, but I think we might review them with the lens of how do we make this something more tangible with outcomes attached? And, you know, outputs attached to it, like this many trainings by this much time, this many, you know, accountability factors and performance reviews, you know, things like that. I think that we could review them with that goal in mind.
So would that be part of our board goal conversation?
Yeah, so I think you said it, just to re... Maybe re-articulate it, that we could touch on it in the protocols workshop. Maybe just gather some initial pieces to see if... Do an assessment of the time. If you think that it could be then done in two readings at a board meeting. So potentially then at our August board meeting to start the conversation. And then the second one to potentially close it in September. Or in that August assessment, you could say, no, we need a separate workshop. And then you could talk about if... And I... Just some general guidance. If you're going to add something about the DEI where we've already done a lot of piece, I think you could tease out a goal, and it's not going to require a new four-hour meeting. If you, in addition to that, have like brand... Completely brand-new goals, then you probably do need a special workshop.
And may have two new board members, so...
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can talk...